... My dear, my dear friend. My dear.
Welcome everyone to our workshop. Um, as most of you already know, we will not be voting on anything tonight without vote at workshop, but we listen and we talk and anything that needs to be voted on can be, uh, put on the next agenda. Uh, we'll start out with item number three, the board to discuss the absolute impactance of one. Right?
Good evening. Great, Curtis, I'm the attorney for the county development authority, the TCA. Uh, the TCA serves as your pre-screening, um, agency for an abhorrent tax exemption application. Uh, I was actually scheduled to prepare for you roughly a month ago, but also at the year same time, a school board's function hearing. Uh, and so I did drop off with you guys, uh, a package that I prepared for you so that we could review in advance and, um, that way I won't be coming to you with a lot of fresh information or things you have not seen before. And so, um, I can kind of present to you what, what I found in dealing with the ordinance and then field questioning or kind of how do you like to proceed.
Okay.
Okay. So, you've got there the state statute that authorizes counties to enact, uh, an abhorrent tax exemption ordinance for economic development or industrial development. And that statute lays forth the process for you to enact it. You've done that and now they've voted to offer, re-operate you to re-act or continue with the same one that you have. The statute then lays out the process for application, eligibility, et cetera. Um, and so that is also laid out in the court statute. The county went and enacted the abhorrent tax exemption ordinance the last time that it enacted it. Um, you may have enacted it and conformity with what the statute was in time, but there are any differences between the current court statute and the existing county ordinance. And so I thought about you used to do, kind of like some of those differences, as I understand that part of the workshop tonight is to look at whether or not you want to amend or tweak your ordinance or something like that. So, one of the... If, if you have the package that I prepared for you last time, I'm starting on page twelve of that package, which is, uh, kind of a form application I put together for apples. And here is one of the things that the...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. This is not the same packet that Mr. Curtis gave me before. We just try to reproduce as much information as we can for you, so they won't have the same page. So what they happen to classify is ordinance to ordinance, which is the exact same.
All right. I, I think, I think at some point I dropped off some, some viral bound, uh, materials. Uh, making sure my words fail me that bad. Um, so the, well, one of the issues is what is, what is an application? You know, I talked about applicant applying and kind of the status quo event is a massive, um, form that the department revenue, the state department revenue propagates now to the property appraisal office called a DR four eighteen. It's a longer two-page form that the applicant then lists a few details and then that gets submitted to the property appraisal office. And both the statute and your ordinance says property appraisal needs to report back to you before you make a decision and let you know how much, um, the proposed added, uh, investment, whether it's, um, personal property like machinery or whether it's construction, which is a real property, how much added tax, uh, abhorrent tax revenue would be generated, how much would be, um, is being requested to be exempted and for what period of time. And so that's kind of happened in the, the nature of the application in the past. It doesn't give you a lot we desire though, uh, because it doesn't tell you much when applicant arrives and you've got one page with very few details that tells you just a little bit about the project. The, your county ordinance does, uh, forth a lot of other requirements for an applicant, uh, you know, or, or put a lot of requirements on the TCA. It requires when the application comes down, where the state statute says the application should go to the county, the state county ordinance does go to the county, says that the county says we need the TCA. So, uh, third, my town receiving the application that the director of the TCA will, um, review the application for completion, review the application to determine its eligibility under the state statute and the code, and then we'll do an economic analysis and repair that and report it to the TCA board. And then we'll go to the TCA board, present those findings to the board, the board asks whatever questions they want, and if they make a recommendation to the board, county commissioner has to, uh, which ordinance, not statute, what the ordinance says, but the TCA board will, um, submit a finding to or of course, to these board county commissioners and recommend approval or denial. And then if approval, what conditions will be placed on that? Uh, it doesn't give a lot of specificity on that, but some might come to mind, or if they're requesting a hundred percent exemption for ten years, the TCA board might recommend seventy-five percent exemption for five years. One of the difficulties with the TCA is there are no guidelines on why they should recommend one thing or the other. It doesn't tell them the county is looking at this, so if it's going to be a bigger job creator, you know, then you might recommend, um, more generous approval, or if the project is, is big or generates a million dollar tax revenue, don't be as generous in your recommendation, um, because, you know, you give a half a million dollar discount, you're still getting a house of revenue of the county. And so TCA board is a little bit lost on why they should recommend an upper down vote or what limitations should be placed upon that, quite frankly, just that they don't know the guidance, there's no guidance in the ordinance, so why they should recommend one thing or the other. So that's a little bit of a difficulty as to, um, and in their process, in their deliberate process. That's interesting, yes, the TCA, uh, we have the same difficulty. Right, you determine, as you say, the guideline, except that the guy, the statutory guideline and ordinance guidelines, the county commission has the ultimate sole discretion to approve or deny. So you can pretty much do whatever reasons you want, so long as you find that it's eligible under the statute and under the code section, so on to develop, or you kind of, uh, you don't, you really don't have to state a reason, just, hey, I think it's eligible, I want to approve it, and that's what they might want to approve it. So you might feel a loss as we do, but you, you get to be the ones to make decisions. The TCA board is over here going, we want to make a recommendation, but quite frankly, we don't want to send something to the county commission, and they go, what about the guy? Oh, we don't have any guidelines as to why you might think something is important or how we should weigh it, so there's a difficulty there for that. Um, another difficulty is, another divergence in the state statute and the county ordinance. The state statute requires that the applicant apply in the year that they are wanting the, um, exemption. The county code says for the applicant to apply before March one, in the year that they want the application, uh, or that they, what is that, the extension. So that distinction in, in my report to the TCA board, I kind of wrote about summary or memo, and I told them, you know, if somebody applies after March one and wants the exemption in that year, you still have to process the application and send it through, but whether or not you can even recommend to the county commission if this is an eligible application, becomes a little bit of a tricky deal, because if we say, yeah, it's eligible under statute, and then we say, well, it's not under your code, or we say it's eligible under your code but it's not under state statute, we recommend you approve it, uh, the, the TCA board is a little bit hesitant when there is a clash or disagreement between the statutory code and the county code, what line you can make, it's difficult to you. Another difficulty was the eligibility statute, that the county code says that it will be, another requirement for eligibility is that the property can't have been added to the tax roll prior to the county's passage of the ordinance. Now, the ordinance says, according to, when the application comes to you, you then have to pass an ordinance specific to that company and that application saying, we are planning and I'm going to go into code order. So if a company applies before March one in the year they want the exemption, but they don't have to go through the TCA process, and then it's matured, it's long, and you need some more information from the applicant, and it makes it to you in October, in the meantime, property has been added to the tax roll under your ordinance, it would seem to read that they lost their eligibility just because of the difference in the property. And you're going to have one coming to you shortly, where that's kind of laid out in the recommendations, and a lot of people, we have had meetings on the other, my guess is the TCA board doesn't recommend to you that they can't really make a recommendation. And that's because we can't even determine if it's eligible under your code, because that is taxable in this interim period. And...
Question, Ray, do you know who, before the county, you need to make proposal with regards to passing the ordinance that they passed, that in two thousand eight, uh, TCA?
I don't.
TCA.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I just want you to, I'm imperfect almost daily, they may be imperfect then, or maybe you track a decade of the statutes at that time. I don't really know, I'm not sure if I castigate anyone.
We're not castigating, I'm just telling you, and just for my part, I'm just, just to realize that, you know, again, nothing is perfect and we can always improve things, but where this came from, was the impetus of it was from the TCA.
Sure.
I specifically remember that. Um, I didn't interrupt, I, I, I'm trying to know something about that.
Um, and another issue that we have is, and you'll see this one coming to you, an application that's come recently, is an issue where a person or a company sent a letter to the director and said, I'd like to apply for an exemption for my company, and we're doing this, and that's next. And then the TCA director turned around and said, hey, here's the form application that we put together, do fill this out. In between the time he sent the first letter and the time he filled out the application we put together, the county, the property was added to the tax roll. So does the initial request count as the application since the neither the statute nor the ordinance define, define what an application is? Does the request by the applicant constitute their application? Or does that come later with something that we created? Or is it the DR four eighteen that the, the county department revenue propagates? Uh, you'll see that coming to you as well, or where we, we're putting in our recommendations. Uh, we, we don't know, it depends on what you determine. If you determine that the initial request, which was prior to the adding to the tax roll, is going to be deemed the application, that's fine. Of course, it's added to the tax roll well before you're going to get the point of passing the ordinance and, uh, that approved or denied it, and of course, under your existing abhorrent tax exemption ordinance, it can't be on the tax roll before you have considered the ordinance as granted or denied. So that's kind of sticking with it, uh, if you're going to look at trying to tweak your ordinance, you might want to look into it. Another one that the TCA has gotten a fair amount of, um, at least I've been advised, a fair amount of negative chatter about is recommending approval of retroactive applications. And so in your ordinance, there is no prohibition against, um, granting, uh, an exemption retroactively. There's only a, a determination of eligibility stipulated for in the years that they want the exemption and had it been added to the tax roll. So for instance, the one that came before you before, where you actually approved it, the project was completed, then the application came, and it came before you, sometime around time, it was added to the tax roll. And so there were a lot of people that said, well, that's not what we intended for. Now, a lot of people got really up to arms about that. Of course, my board came to me and said, did you let us make a poor recommendation? Actually, before we even got to this one, making your recommendation, I did the research on it, and I provided my board with two attorney general opinions, the first one nineteen eighty-one, and the second one was eight or nine years later, where they took up the jury issue and they issued an opinion that, uh, that this is a free or general discretion of the county commission, you can't approve them retroactively. And of course, uh, there was a lot of back and forth against, well, why would you give a law approved one retroactively in some of the things that were going on? A company may come to you and say, look, we can get the funding, we've got a window to get the funding. If we can get, uh, if we think we can get this great, they'll go ahead and get the funding, and we start building. Meanwhile, the process must take a while, but we're already underway. And even my boss would say, well, that's a retroactive application, because you're already underway, you're going to do this anyway. But occasionally, a company may need the, the process of the exemption, go ahead and pay funding and start constructing, and have a short plan, so that, that's why I'm not advocating for, and decided to look for a reason why the attorney general of office, of the reasons that they didn't say that it was prohibitive, because it's not statutory, it's, he's looking for a policy reason as to why, in certain circumstances, that might be a good idea, there may just be that company that comes to you and says, we've got a small engine here, if we can make a call, but we'll have to come to you for that application after the fact, but generally speaking, you know, do you think, do you think it would be eligible, et cetera? Um, but that's something that, I know that there's been a lot of negative feedback on, and so it may be something that you want to address in your, uh, ordinance, or you may not. Um, let's see. Another issue is that the TCA under the existing ordinance is not tasked with vetting the facts that the applicant commits. So imagine we have an application that comes for, excuse me, where the person says, this project that I'm embarking on, or begun embarking on, or I've already completed, is going to generate fifty jobs, and that seems pretty darn unlikely, you know? The TCA, you know, you have this pre-screening agency, uh, does it need, is a task for going out there and investigating facts on the ground and trying to determine if they were truthful, or if the applicant was just trying to stretch it so that he could make them or just trying to get a vote for them. Um, and so, no process for that. On top of that, um, you know, that would probably be a pretty time-consuming thing, and if you were going to vet the facts of why applicant, you can't, won't be vetting the facts of every applicant so that you weren't, um, inequitably shining a light on one and not the other. I, I don't know, but it's probably something in the policy wheelhouse. But that is something else that the, the TCA board is raised, that I am real concerned about this application, I'm not so sure about this, and my advice to them is, uh, first of all, you're all volunteer board, and you all have jobs to go to, where are we going to find the time to investigate these things? Of course, we have a director that we could take him and have him be investigating these applications in the past, and certainly is a, is an option potentially. Um, but more importantly, the county commission did not pass this data, and we don't want to steer outside the lane either, and have something blow up, and the county commission gives negative feedback, the TCA is out here beating bushes and calling them alive, right? So unless we're, the TCA is directed by you to go out and vet something, where we might be put in a position, saying, now, if this, if this town is following, unless we're directed to do that, that has not been where we're wanting to go, but there are hard concerns about this application that's made. By the way, with increased development, it comes increases in these applications, so you've got a lot of you in the hopper right now that are coming your way after we do our appreciation process.
Well, just, as you were talking about this, I'm just wondering, what was the volunteer in the beginning, when TCA, TCA came up with this idea and presented it? I mean, did everybody not think about all these things that you're discussing that now are appearing, and, well, we don't have time to volunteer, so obviously then it's going to be thrown in our lap?
I do not know. I don't have the TCA attorney at the time, I was, um, a lovely public defender of the county back then, so I can't, I can't, can't wait on that, and we don't have the institutional knowledge. Scott Predator, to my knowledge, was not the director at that time, but I think that's incorrect, and I certainly have it not the existing board, where, far as I know, were ordinance at this time, so we just, I don't have the institutional knowledge. Well, from that, it might be something that we're, we're here right now, um, I have not reached out to him, uh, that, that question, so. Um, and so then the, the last thing is that, um, the TCA ultimately would, would like to not be in this, in, in plank of all of the pre-screening agency, if, if you determine that that would be an appropriate step to our appropriate modification of the ordinance. It is, um, on a lot of these issues, the board and the director are kicking in some work on them, because quite frankly, some of these get down illegally, and the Scott doesn't want to say, I, I recommend to my board to be a TCA that this is eligible, and comes up here, and the board goes, hell, we're eligible, this is, this doesn't mean this, or this doesn't mean that. Um, you know, Mr. Predator is competent in various things, but he certainly isn't going to be as competent, as my fellow members vicious certainly, and parsing out statutory language is interplay with your, um, with your ordinance, and then interplaying that with the facts, especially relative to the urgency of things. And then, uh, certainly, you know, having the research attorney general opinion to back up support and eligibility recommendations for something that's a retroactive application, it's not going to be easy to come to. And so it ends up getting, puts me to trial to steal the jobs that have passed through the TCA, and unfortunately, that, you know, it is expensive for the TCA's, um, relatively mid-budget. And so the TCA certainly is hopeful rest of the county and revamping or modifying this ordinance to take that responsibility off of the TCA, but, um, you know, that's totally within your...
Well, I'm guessing from this, is the first thing we need to do is we need to ask Mr. Bishop, or do whatever, some legal expert, to change the ordinance. The ordinance needs to be changed, because it's in conflict with what the state statute is. Am I correct in that? We need to tweak our ordinance.
Uh, there are some conflicts between ordinance and state statute that are absolutely permissible. The legislature has this document called preemption, where certain things, when they decide it, counties, municipalities can, can step in that area, so for instance, uh, regulation on alcohol, I think we're all very familiar with, say, regulate that, and you don't really get to regulate it, or, or unless they otherwise say, counties can control this, that could be others, right?
Gun control.
Gun control, that's B, okay? So we're all familiar with that concept of preemption, but then there are other areas, for instance, the state statute says a sexual offender can't live in a town that's a place where children are normally hungry. Your county ordinance is from that, and that is a permissible deviation of between states and counties. Uh, and so I'm, I'm not saying telling you that the, the divergence between these two is actually in violation of the law. I have not come across any law where, uh, asking by law, in case law or decision or attorney general opinion, where the, some court or the attorney general analyzed the situation where, uh, an acting ordinance for a TCA development authority that buries from the state statute, and makes that, yeah, this is a preemption, then you cannot do that.
Well, if we're not in conflict with the state statute with our ordinance, then the ordinance still needs to be tweaked, if that's a good word.
I think I would definitely agree with that.
You would agree with that?
Yes.
All right, now, the question is, is I want to tweak it, and, uh, so we'll have to rely on somebody, either you or Mr. Bishop, or some other attorney, to present us some documents that would secure all the issues that we have about the TCA or whatever, who is eligible, who isn't eligible.
Yes, sir.
What the application looks like, when the application is posted, is it March the first or is it some other date? And then I could look that over and compare it with what I've heard you say, because I don't know, but it's a wrong fish thing, I don't have that, that expertise.
And that's one thing that's going to fall to the lawyers, I think probably what the lawyers would want your guidance on are policy changes. For instance, do you still want the TCA to serve a pre-screening role, or do you want them to serve a modified or variant of that role? Not at all. If, if we can add that kind of direction, we go a little better idea where to go.
Well, instead of reinventing the wheel, while we look at some of those communities, doesn't mean that we have to do what other communities do, but at least as a starting point, to, to, what does this county do in this county?
They need to be a starting point, because they're the ones that's going to be helping with, uh, somebody coming in and building them. They're going to be the ones to see them and talk to them first, let the TCA write to you, they're going to be, you know, the recommendations, they're going to talk to people first when they first come to that county.
But they're going to have something for months to tell them.
Yeah, we need, we need to get the ordinance straight without, without those, uh, stuff going on.
I, 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 I recall you want to...
Well, you all recall, in March nineteen to two thousand eighteen, I sent a letter, uh, to, uh, Melinda, and there's a copy of that in the package, and it explains the, my own opinion, um, what you have to do, and the requirements that, uh, and it, I think it's pretty, I tried to make it as simplistic as I could, so that it would be easily understood. Um, and I think every, and I was reviewing it as, um, lady was speaking, and I think we all need to review it again, and also attached a copy of not only the ordinance for two thousand nine F zero eight, but I also attached the copy, uh, the statute when I was, I didn't really, uh, it doesn't practice on my, um, so, uh, and not, again, nothing's perfect, and so if it needs to be, um, for lack of a better term, I don't like that, that term better than tweaking, um, then of course, we can get it, but the, the purpose of this was to explain to Melinda and Ted that, um, you know, this is a ten, ten-year thing, and that has to be renewed for a couple of ten years, uh, through by referendum, not needed at, what's that, also put on the, uh, on the ballot, and it was approved, so we can go ahead and amend our ordinance to, to how we see fit. Um, but it provides that, let me just go through it just a little bit, it says, when a person, a person incorporates into it to get the benefit of this, the application must include the following, the name, the location, the new business, or the extent, you know, the shooting business, description of this presence to the real property, description of the tangible personal property, there's a difference between real and personal property, which is satisfied to the board, county commissioner, that is the new business for expansion of the existing, uh, this is defined by section one ninety-six, um, point zero one two fifteen, which states, makes forms of those things, and also, uh, the number of jobs the applicant expects to create along the average wage of the jobs, and whether the jobs are expected to be scheduled for the jobs, other than maybe necessary by the county. And then before the county takes, acts on that, the board should deliver a copy to the property, place up the count, and the property should, shall report to the board the total revenue, um, something to add a little on tax forces, one has to, that's, uh, the revenue lost to the county as a result of this, um, and that's, and that, of the revenue that would be lost during the current fiscal year. Name, location, new business or the extent, you know, the shooting business. Description of this prison to the real property, description of the tangible personal property, there's a difference between real and personal property. Who's the satisfaction of the board can't commission that to the new business or expansion of the existing. Uh, this is defined by section one ninety six, um, point zero one two fifteen, which states, and it forms those things. And also, uh, the number of jobs the applicant expects to create along the average wage of the jobs and whether the jobs are expected to be scheduled for the jobs. Other information being necessary appropriate by the county. And then before the county takes action on that, the board should deliver a copy to the property at place of the county. And the property should now report to the board the total revenue, um, something to add a little on tax forces. One has to know that, uh, the revenue lost to the county as a result of this, um, and that's the, of the revenue that would be lost during the current fiscal year. That may be why, uh, March first date was entered in that way. The determination of whether the property for which it's an exemption is required to be incorporated into the new business. So, um, and then in consideration of this, then it has to list from A to G, which is supposed to be. And then an ordinance stringing an exemption under this, um, section shall be adopted in the same manner as ordinance, uh, that you, and you have other ordinances. Um, so it really, uh, again, if we're getting, if we're going to get some applications for these exemptions, it's important that we not only know what the state, state statute states, but also what these ordinance states. And again, like, I think it was pretty succinctly put by, um, Ray, who's going to do the research to determine in fact whether you want to, uh, consider the application and grant the exemption. One other issue with regards to the retroactive, um, there was this, what did they mean by the state? And we went back and, um, we did, it's all recalled, to give citizens the, um, the advantage of, of the exemption. I suppose what happened with regards to that, I think, um, I was pointing out to this by Ray, which I appreciated on that. Um, so I, you know, like I said before, I don't have any, I don't know that I've ever drafted a perfect piece of paper in my mind. Um, so there's always room for improvement. Um, and I don't, you know, and one of the things, good things about this that I told y'all before, and I, I think that, um, I learned, um, colleagues from justice who agree with me is that there's no, um, there's no, uh, place for them to alter. Do you agree with that?
Yeah.
With regard to making copies and, and, and following what other people have done. Have any idea how many, um, requests, applications are coming down the pipe?
I think we have three that are circulating through now with a number of another coming. Those all come last sixty days, if I'm right. How, have they new or, uh, are they used? Well, then, well, the definition of new business or expanding business that forth involves statute and the ordinance. And so, uh, it, it appears that all of them qualify under the definition that forth there. But oftentimes those definitions and what people might think of as a new business, those ever, um, I want to clarify that. In my opinion, that's where we're going to end and push up to the county ordinance. Um, now, I mentioned the vacuum, which Mr. Bishop reading off, um, about six or seven of those are both statutory and that were copied into the ordinance, but in the ordinance doesn't mention that. And the D R four eighteen, which is the single-page form that's been prompted by the state D R related deeds and that, um, gets filled out by the applicant and by the person, has all those back statutory questions. How many jobs would create, or number of full-time jobs, the type of property, et cetera. And then first build a, the property creator build a bomb or just choose how much capital you expect, choose how much would be discounted. Your ordinance though asks additional questions in the, well, the more paid form, which is why I would try to create a separate application. And then just ask those to ask all the ones that you have in the county as well. But, um, and I believe, uh, Mr. Demp pointed out, we have, I believe it was you, that identifying what the application is going to constitute would be a really good thing. Because if they're getting the one that's always been accepted as the application, a single-page pack form, uh, they're not answering some of the questions that you put in your ordinance to go out and statute it too much.
Well, just, that's my idea. If, since there are so many things that could cost the way, um, as you explained, getting the, um, application in and going through the process and then they end up being on the tax forms anyway and, and, uh, that seems like.
Like a retroactive for the data application as opposed to.
But I, I mean, that's one, that's one idea, that's one idea. And then another idea would be, what if we, we, we gave them like, waited a year? And then at the end of the first year, they thought, we know how many employees they have, we know what they're doing, and then grant the exemption then. What do you think about that?
Great question. My, 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 great question. I don't know the answer to it.
And I'm trying to explain that.
Sure.
So the thing that she says, and your ordinance tracks generally in the suburb, the application of the maybe year that they want the exemption. So if they complete the project, they just have to listen to people they can afford, you know, apply. You would essentially be saying, and our policy to protect our application at this time. So if you apply for exemption next year, because you can apply in the year you want the exemption, you give it a year so we see your track rate and you will apply next year. The counter to that is both the statute and the ordinance allowing to appoint. So you can grant, you can say, "I'm giving this to you for ten years," but you can do an annual review, affect a call or an annual, whatever, upon request. All, all that has happened is someone, um, I don't think it does me too, but if someone from the county or perhaps now TCA, I don't know if it means that. Someone from the county would say, "Mr. applicant, you represented, you're going to create fifty jobs, and we're requesting our annual review provide X, Y, and Z." And if they did do it, you can then hold a meeting and modify or we're opposed to the exemption. So you have that power already.
Right. And this seems like this could have been under a, we call it home rule, where counties in some cases can make their own rules. Um, so if, so we could change our ordinance to say what we want it to say.
Yeah, I think so, right.
I mean, that's what we're talking about.
What, now?
Sure.
Well, when you do that, you need to have, uh, training, rest, you should have seen my old man, I thought, or anything done, you know. I can understand tough business and doing what's best, but I'm not shocked enough to do it in the U S, uh, they just told me you wouldn't do it. It's this, it's like this is right before the war.
But that's why I return you, that's, uh, for, um, exactly, this is a strength, and that too. Um.
Yeah, I think.
Here for something else.
I think certainly if the policy directives were, were kind of, uh, I think him voted on anything or taking anything out, but if Mr. Bishop, I, I got the sense, um, this particular item that the board was kind of feeling like this might be a good way to look. It might give us, um, Mr. Bishop's ability to start drafting, maybe even just set a goal, like, present the usual expectation. Here's, here's my takeaway from the workshop of these goal points you want to start fleshing out with the county.
Uh, no, we have to have a referendum first before, uh.
Referendum is bad.
All right, I just read your language. First thing to do is.
That was in March two thousand and eighteen, um.
Well, that's our, uh.
The question was, you know, we got all worried about it because the ten years was up.
Okay.
Okay, and so we scrambled and got, um, to the bottom of the letters on the first page that they had said, telling, did we have, telling, uh, telling, uh, Belanda, uh, something or two for against agreeing with the exemption that passed. So, um, I'm, this page is my letter, it's dated March nineteen, if you have anything. We got it on the ballot and it passed.
All right, all right, that's, that's sort of ten years sunset, which you also incorporated to your ordinance. That was it, you know, it was one of some set, two holes, and I'll sit with that and go back and go back and pass.
So, here's, here's a suggestion, uh, and, and I listen to Ray, so remember every one thing made.
I'm all under that.
Well, y'all would just, uh, say, uh, but, but Ray and I, uh, get together and, and, uh, look at the ordinance and look at the, um, statute together and then bring y'all with the recommendation. If in fact, uh, we can agree or give you maybe this way, this way, and then that way, um, in the form of a hopefully letter that's easily understood to y'all.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea.
That works for me.
One thing that I'm just concerned about though is who, it's like, we sort of said, who is going to validate the application? And I think about, and I think about our staff, and I can't take a one single person, then I would say, we'll have to get this person to do that. Because I can see for at least to take quite a bit of time, then you've got three or four coming in quickly. I mean, this is a concern.
Right.
And, you know, we have to hire more staff to do this, and then we, then we also, uh, when we grant these, we give it up revenue then, so that's a huge concern. But they're, they're clear, they don't have time to do it, and they don't have the money to pay Mr. Cruz stuff. We're kind of at the same place.
Well, an option that you were kind of alluding to it earlier on the, on the delay side may be that, um, perhaps you set out with an annual review that's going to be mandatory, no matter what, we don't need to ask you where you deliver it. Twelve months after the grant, and it can have the following things, copies of, uh, peerless employees, approved employment, say of, uh, you know, W nine or something like that. That's all good. Something that they've got produced that they can kind of like, here's our package. The child doesn't have to go out on the field, so if you go, all right, on their application, they said they were going to deliver twenty-seven jobs, they have thirteen.
Give them on your back.
Well, it don't, it don't really, I, I don't think it works like that, that you can cancel, that you can then take it up and say, we're, we're maybe determining the exemption.
Well, that's well and good, but if, if you're, for instance, if we have natural day to come in and it's the end of, say, some February, and then somebody has got to stop what they're doing to get this done.
And y'all probably have some time and in your current ordinance. But he, you got over there, I think you alluded to that. Let's say you go to the TCA for, my thing. And you have time frame, you know, in ordinance, and I think, uh, Scott Fredrick within ten days received the application. At the beginning, one of them was in thirty days after committing to his board. Um, and so, um, he, as you're saying, county will stop, we should do it, you want to make your time frame and, and get down to it really quickly.
Yeah, I, I don't want to worry so much too much. Because I just want to think you have staff that's time to do it.
You mean both, uh, we have a problem, uh, yeah.
And I want staff.
I said, I, I wrong, you said, I said, well, that's fine, but we don't, there's not that many of us to do all this.
Right, I do not want burden, I already burdened staff to do this.
I agree with you.
I think that the TCA, TCA director maybe will be going to do it.
He doesn't have time, he's not even here, uh.
Well, then he needs to make time.
Let's see.
Yeah, come on.
I'll throw up on TCA board, Ray, and this, uh, comes, I mean, we got one. It's still empty, just getting that exemption now, and he got half of the fact, he got it before March one, four, one, two, three, on the, on the back of it. By the, by the doing it, they did send them a five before they did anything, they did the five, they wasn't going to do it. And then that board is now, they're supposed to tell you each year how many jobs they got, didn't have orders placed. They're supposed to give a report how, how were they complying. And I don't think, I don't see the oversight on that, that the property creator keeps up and getting avenues moving and all that, but it's, it's not saying numbers now off the board, pretty far away, so we all have, it's a, it takes more than two hours to keep it straight. But if you just took, come apply before you do it. And provide this many jobs, then follow through, and that, that cleans that up, that part of it.
And then they, they monitor all down there each year.
Because they all, they don't know when you do it, you know, what they're not.
I'd say, and then what, what's the person coming in before they start the project? Back there, I'm looking at you, I'm looking, you know, I can't see them, but then life is, then at least once a year, somebody's got to verify.
They're going to tell you that they've done, that's their job to do it. And if they don't do it, the.
So I got to check, yeah.
That's, that's simple, but when you start doing a retroactive, how far retroactive do you get?
You know, I agree with you, I don't, I'm not.
I don't know, uh, what, what I'll be answering by move, but I do know that this retroactivity part is what's a lot of problems. I do know that we need a TCA director that's here, y'all gave him a hundred thousand dollars, and one of you know where it went. I'm sorry, can you tell me where it went? It went to that company out there, and plain, like, yes, needs to be taken care of, and we need to, need to be tried. And, um, I, I.
Especially to Mr. Ralph, um, I'd like to direct an organization back to while we're here, Mr. Ralph, um, and I think to Mr. Fredrick, handle the TCA board and retroactive applications, and I'm all here for the two of information. And that information is, uh, they're legal, whether or not you want to approve, and it's fully in discretion. And that's what the attorney general said, and I'm on the two opinions. And so, uh, Mr. Ralph, I say, if you're handling that retroactive, um, application, I'm just on the back, that law, I know it's a pretty good retroactive, right?
And, and I appreciate what you've done this evening, but it seems like to me that this one needs to spend more time talking together and working through this. Even if you don't validate the application on the front end, and if you make it so in each year you're going to validate it, then again, we're at the same place. Who's going to do that?
That's, it's, no matter, sure, that's, no matter when you do it, or you do, you set it up to validate this issue, right?
But who's going to do it? That's one of my questions.
Put the burden on the applicant to, to tell you that they're going to do it, and it's that.
But that's not validating that, that.
I, I see, I see, I, 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 but I, I would, the TCA board will, will do a good job for getting director that's in this law, what we come for. He needs to be there, he wants us to, we've been meeting, we want him, I think, we want to go to meeting.
Okay, let's do this, hold on, let's do this, hold on, let's do this. If this is something that you want the board to discuss, then why don't you, I recommend that you ask to have it on the agenda for, uh, for workshop. So if you want to talk about the director and, and where he's going and what he's doing, then I think that's another agenda item. And you're free to add, hold on, just a second, let me think. You can add that to any agenda, a workshop, and within the process, we're happy with the way things go on.
The ordinance, that's by, I mean, executive director, I remember he did Tom, you know, but that, that's, I'm getting off on a tangent, but I, I do thank y'all, they ought to be applied before they come, before they do anything, like the application. Put the burden on the applicant to show they're complying with it, and, uh, I got some other issues up, but my, you know, I, that, that's getting off on a tangent. We can't function like it is.
Okay, well, we, we, I appreciate your input, and, uh, it's well-earned.
Yeah, I agree with the rest of the property part of it, they need to come up front.
Yeah.
To start with, before you build the project, and I'm going to make that, not that, the fact.
Okay, moving on now is, um, um, our attorney, Mr. Bishop, has suggested that he and Mr. Cruz get together, and, um, if everybody okay, we say, okay, then I would suggest, let's get together, make some sort of proposal to them, we can rehearse it then, and, and see how it shakes out, toughs out.
That's perfect.
Working with Mr. Fredrick will happen.
Thank you for your time, I'm sure it's a long one, but it's kind of complex.
That's all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, send me an email.
Look it up. Our number four, what should be classified in a fleet vehicle with sheds on. Did you give the attorney a copy of the lease?
Uh-uh.
Now, if you don't, I might.
We, we don't have a lease yet, now, we don't have, we have a pilot, I think, like he's.
I understand, had to have a copy of the lease to be a, I need to read it. A proposed lease, I would say, he just gave it to you, but he's all, master schedule.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't reviewed all this or anything, so.
Okay, I'll get to that.
Thanks for the opportunity for me to come out here tonight, my name's Jake Hardy, I'm with Enterprise, I'm sure you guys familiar with our girlfriend vision, I'm actually on the fleet management side, so what we're doing is partnering with Sheriff's Office, cities, counties, throughout the state, and helping them do more with less, with all of our programs, we kind of tailor to specific needs and applications of the vehicle, so what we're going to do with the sheriff's office here in Taylor County might not be the same as what we're doing over in Gillcriss County, Leon County, so everybody want to make sure that we're making the best recommendations and getting guys in and out of vehicles at the right time. I provided a really high level overview of some services that we're providing, as well as fleet options, we're doing new conversations now for a few months, just kind of going over some of our programs, what we have to offer, so as far as what we do, quite a great approach to fleet management, so helping with everything, acquiring new vehicles all the way through to the resale of annual vehicles, we have programs in place for everything in between, so fuel, maintenance, all that, with that, all the carts, there's nothing that says you have to do, that requires a program, we make the recommendations based on what we see, so my agencies are typically working with us, they have the ability to get more vehicles for the same path out there as what they're doing today. I'd love to answer any questions you guys might have, and I'm going to have to see what you guys might know about fleet management vision, or, you know, what are you discussing?
Anybody? I mean, we haven't, really haven't.
I had too much time, all right, well, I was kind of, you know, walk through.
Just sit down, I mean, there's, there's not much to add, you know, cars, the vehicles, but.
Out of all those.
Let's just go for some.
Kind of walk through, you know, how, so, in the sheriff's office, there's about fifty-three vehicles that follow through our niche, we can help out with everything from their emergency response vehicles, admin vehicles, the jail transport vehicles, and from that, what we do is draw a line and say, hey, your vehicle, you've got five vehicles very well, but what we're typically seeing, you've got to hold on to them for a little bit too long, in our assessment, we have identified about forty-one percent of fleets is over that ten years of age, or over that hundred thousand mile mark, what's that meaning, actually they're not providing the warranty work or anything on these vehicles, so they're being over the war on states, think of, you know, telephone technology, technology is really magic improving over the past ten years, so what we're seeing is kind of a, a, quite a lot of vehicles pass their optimal life. When we partnered with the city of Lake City, we helped them identify some of their underutilized vehicles, and what we set out to do is, you know, right size of fleet, right size of fleet, and standardize, so you're not going to have a mixture of different vehicles out there on the roadway, and want to make sure that we're actually giving the, the best vehicle for the best price point. In doing so, we're, we're very familiar with the Florida Sheriff's Association, that's the goal, that we go off of, so we kind of leverage our buying power as a rental car company, and then try and get state contract pricing work better when it comes to, comes to these vehicles. The truck, the truck market right now is extremely hot, so what we're recommending with a lot of agencies is for admin type vehicles, getting in trucks, they're going on to them from anywhere from twelve months to, you know, twenty-four, thirty-six month term, and we actually educate on when's the right time to get out of a vehicle, with our, a lot of times, people feel the lease, they think of a traditional dealership lease, plus there's no miles restriction, there's no wear and tear pattern, the county's actually reformed the benefits of the resale of these vehicles. We keep you educated, as the economy of the, of these car markets down, we're chatting with every single day, so we keep you guys educated on what your current equity position is on the vehicle, throughout the life of partnerships, my goal is not to, you know, kind of sheriff's office, set of these and part ways, we're trying to be with you guys throughout the lifetime of partnership, coming out, making recommendations year over year, what's at that time, to get a new vehicle, or what new incentive we're wanting out, I was actually able to set up a pet drive from you, Bob Schringer, for the guys, and they're able to sit in and see, you know, this is a little bit of a different vehicle, and what they've utilized in the past. Again, what we're, what we're setting out to do for, for the sheriff's office, I'd love to help, you know, the county as well, just with some of their, their admin type vehicles, or public workshops, or, you know, different vehicles and different applications all for different leasing parameters, and different full periods, so what we might make a recommendation on one vehicle, one needs to stay for, for the next, so, again, it's more of a long-term partnership than just outstanding these and part ways, we want to look, you know, stay local and have vehicles ordered, ready for the manufacturer, and have them actually deliver here locally to local dealerships, so you're still utilizing the local package, and then, you know, from there, go, go out and get the vehicles in and out at the, at the best, at that time. What it did is actually created a fleet profile, what this did is identify each vehicle type, number of those types, the age of those vehicles, and some of the average mileage pattern that we saw in vehicles. From there, we come up with a replacement schedule, rather than having a generic plan of, hey, we're going to have a real call off, and, and, you know, put some stuff there on to get back on the road, we need to draw a line and say, we have a specific replacement plan, so we're really lowering cost of ownership when it goes, comes to these vehicles. Again, we're looking at every cost component from acquisition to resale vehicle, considering out strategic ways that we can shave those down, and actually move buckets to, to save the county money. Our projected savings for the sheriff's office alone is about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars over a ten-year period, again, we're, we're setting these up, and we're asking about ten years down the road, we're not trying to sell bad goods, we initially partnered with the city of Lake City, rolled out similar ten-year models, and that, in that model, we were projecting about one point one million dollars in savings. The city did an internal audit of our program, about five years into it, and they'd already recognized one point eight million dollars of savings just in the short five years. Getting into newer vehicles, that's covered under warranty, there may be a dramatic shift if you're operating, it's going to break down, and then, again, you're getting more fuel efficient vehicles, that can help your, your fuel expenditure, safety, at the end of the day, you know, sheriff's team being the safest vehicle possible, the technology that's out there today is significantly better for them than it was ten years ago, being just kind of a, a, there's a great little growth, and we need to just make sure that we're coming on these best proactive recommendations year over year. I understand, you know, how things fluctuate, we want to tailor our recommendations and programs to what actually makes, you know, the most financial sense, again, when we're talking about vehicles, we're not talking about adding vehicles, we're talking about replacing vehicles, so your current fleet does have equity still in those, in those vehicles, and with a lot of agencies, they're actually able to knock out the current year budget and pay for, partner partnerships with the resale of old vehicles, way makes, you know, most sense, it's just, you know, looking on, on one vehicle, for Chevy, Toyota, for example, you guys are actually able to buy that vehicle much cheaper than averages to go into, to a dealership, so typical sticker price is about thirty-seven thousand dollars, as the government agency has been actually buying that same truck for about twenty-four thousand dollars. What we see though, is you guys buy that truck, they're a great buy, but it's going to be in the, in the fleet for the next ten, fifteen years sometime, we want to shrink down that, that cycle, and figure out what's optimal point time for that truck is, to get you in and out, and make sure that you're not spending more money on operating expenditure, not to really where the bulk of the cost of the inspection comes from, just from there. I've included some, some recommendations, articles that have been written, this is one I, I found from the Lake City from, from years ago, that just shows kind of all, I'm concerned, we're helping them with admin vehicles, public works vehicles, the police, police force has, has our vehicles, but we want to make sure that the public's aware of, you know, that you, you know, tend to vehicle doctor on the road there, you know, we don't want too many questions we have, we want to help educate the public on how our program actually makes sense, and what, how it's actually saving money, utilizing the replacement schedule, however it's posed, and also included some references there at the exception, with that, we're, like you said, I'm making up for Lake City, Gillcriss County Sheriff's Office, Leon County Sheriff's Office, Department of Children and Families, all these different agencies are utilizing our services, and make sure that they're releasing the best, best recommendations for vehicles. As a company, we don't have any ties to a single manufacturer, what we do is find out each different vehicle, and make those, the best recommendations to have the lowest expense per mile when it comes to admin vehicle on the road, you know, there's, there's been more questions than, you know, that's.
Does this, this come equipped with, you know, electronics?
That's a great question, so, we're building vehicles actually from the wheels up, so I've got with Mitch Thompson, and he's actually reached out, we're not in a relationship in any business, so they are utilizing some of our partners, Dan State Theater Wing Communication utilized them, we want to make sure that we're still, you know, didn't say equipment is getting exactly the specifications for the vehicles that they're wanting on the road, but again, we're, when we go to Ford, for example, we're selling the trucks from the wheels up and walking through the specification to make sure that you're getting the exact vehicle that you want.
Well, your question is, does it come with the emergency lights, the sirens, the radios, everything that's supposed to come in the vehicle, that's what you're asking, it can, and it can be added into the lease, or we can buy the equipment outright and change it from vehicle to vehicle as we have, as we change out to you.
Do you know the analysis, um, of the, of how the analysis would be, what would be the best one?
As, as it stands now, I mean, because of the radio system we use, you know, proprietary system, the center forum system that we changed to, so as it stands now, it's probably going to be cheaper for us to buy the equipment and move it from vehicle to vehicle, it's like three hundred and fifty dollars to take it out of one vehicle and put it in another vehicle, and then just lease with Enterprise. And, you know, he talked about that prime market time when we talked in the office, let's say we can buy a vehicle on state contract, or on the sheriff's bid for twenty-six thousand, they can buy it a little bit for twenty-six thousand, but you can't buy it for twenty-six thousand, so two years down the road on that truck, that truck may be worth more than the twenty-six we paid for, that's where he talks about making the residual money, and that goes into a fund where you can put it back to the lease.
Could you do a comparison, tell me then, like, say for the, the last five years, what it's cost in terms of acquiring vehicles and the maintenance and all of that, versus five years with them, is that how you got your total savings that you're talking about?
So essentially, that top line on the ten-year model is, the yellow line is actually the benchmark that we use off of your actual information, from that, we're just buying straight over the past three years, you guys have been actually acquiring about seven, seven leased vehicles, that is actual maintenance and fuel expenditure that we were provided as well, from that, that's where we established a benchmark for Enterprise to go off of. We want to make sure that we're being effective, making sure that we're making the best recommendations to, you know, actually provide the top savings. Again, some of the things that you can't put a dollar on on there is the increased safety for these officers, the recruitment tools that, that come along with the new vehicle, the services provided getting in, you know, getting into newer vehicles, so seeing those are, you know, those are some that you can't afford, but you can, we're the point of, but.
Could you bring the, the actual lease payments per year on the buy during the, how did you pull that up? I think it was somewhere around thirty-eight or forty thousand dollars, and at the annual lease payment, you have five vehicles, I can't buy five vehicles for forty thousand dollars, we can't do that, even, and so, once it's in the system, and like you said, it's no family, I mean, there was no miles restrictions, it all comes down to what that residual value is at the end.
Now, let me go back and pick my understanding, forty thousand dollars will get you five new vehicles.
Quite correct.
And you can keep them one year at a time, and, and your company's going to tell us what the optimum time is to have another vehicle out, and then, and then you replace them with, if it's four years left, you, you give us another new vehicle, and we get some residual value out of the sale of the original vehicle.
Let's see, can you touch this?
Well, I, I talked to, I can't remember which county it was, but their last, when they sold out their residual vehicle, when, when they started swapping their vehicles out, their residual payment, money that they got, paid for eight months of a lease. No, that's the, I'm not sure about that one, but something that we did with City of St. Mary's, for example, they had nine of the worst year trucks they had to offer, and they were just, you know, old, one of them was, you actually send the wrecker up to, to pick it apart and, and drive it down, they were able to pay for six months of their lease payments just on the equity they had in the old vehicle. It's kind of a snowball effect, so once the program actually gets implemented, something we're doing with Fisher County Sheriff's Office, for example, they're buying these trucks and holding on to them for anywhere from that twelve to twenty-four months, selling them from what money they paid for, they're having the funds go into a general fund, it's your money, it's your, it's your decision on where you actually want the, the money to go, they're utilizing that, because the aftermarket that you're asking about, that's anywhere from five thousand to, you know, ten, fifteen thousand dollars.
And actually, it runs for us, if we have to put a new radio in, and everything, it runs about fourteen thousand dollars per vehicle, just for the equipment to go to the vehicle.
I want to hear from my attorney.
I'm looking at just sheriff's, sheriff's fleet planning and out, we're going to just be giving this over, and give it, and I'm going to have some questions. Um, the current fleet is a fifty-three vehicle?
That includes the jail vans and administrative vehicles and patrol vehicles.
Yes, all of them. Fifty-three, right, okay, Marty, okay, and it says annual need, seven, so seven new vehicles each year?
Excuse me, understand that other than fifty-three vehicles, some of them are not in service, they're vehicles that we're going to get rid of when we implement this lease, okay?
There's nothing to run at, it's only fifty-three, and then it says, oh, fifty-three, lease zero, purchase, two oh seven, con, three thirty-four, now what's that figure? Is that a money figure, or what's that figure?
That's, that's a money figure, so.
Okay.
Assuming, am I the seven vehicles cash right now, that would be cash all eight for those seven vehicles.
Okay, all right, and then it says, lease zero, maintenance thirty-three thousand one hundred and nine, is that correct? I'm making sure that's correct, and then fuel is a hundred and twenty-two thousand fifty-nine, that's money again, right, and then fleet budget would be three hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty, is that your budget for the first year, right?
Now, that's, that's, if I'm looking at this right, this is currently what it's costing us to be.
That's what I meant, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Okay, so the net cash is zero, right, okay, then you go, let's go to two thousand and nineteen, right, that's under that, okay, because this was two thousand and eighteen, okay, you go to two thousand, say fleet five fifty-three, that's hypothetically, because you might have gotten rid of it on Marty, right?
Right.
Okay, so you need maybe more than the seven, it would be twelve, right, correct, sir?
Correct.
Okay, um, forty-one, so we're leasing twelve vehicles, but that's the bigger time in two thousand and nineteen, correct, all right, not five, it was twelve.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Well, that's, that's, that is a prediction he made, now we, this, this is.
Well, I gotta go through this, that's what I was saying, Marty, okay, okay, so, purchase, there would, it would be a zero, right, because you aren't purchasing any, you're leasing in two thousand and nineteen, for a figure of ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, that would be, that would be on twelve vehicles, right?
Correct.
Okay, maintenance thirty thousand, two hundred and seventeen, again, you have absolutely no equity in it, and then, you're saying that the fuel would be, since they're new vehicles, the fuel would be less, a hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and three dollars, and then, the fleet budget would be two thirty-eight, one twenty-four, and so you're saying, by this chart, that we would save a hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and... Maintenance thirty thousand two hundred and seventeen. Again, you have absolutely no equity in it. And then, you're saying that the fuel would be, since they're new vehicles, the fuel would be less, a hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And then, the fleet budget would be two thirty-eight, one twenty-four. And so, you're saying by this chart that we would save a hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars?
It does, yes.
Okay. All right. And then, as you go down on this, your savings are less.
So, as.
Until, until you get to probably, you graduate in year, what, twenty twenty-five? Am I right? Or twenty twenty-six? This is so small a crap, for, for me, gosh, for anybody. Yeah, twenty twenty-six. So, the net cash, it would go up again, and then it goes back down the next, the next year. And, um, you've got an asterisk here that says your lease rates are conservative estimates. Okay. So, that's low estimates, right? So, if interest rates go up, then they're not going to be as conservative, right? But you've got to continue to go with the CPI and that sort of thing, right? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, this is based upon ten years, and you have the same amount of vehicle, fifty-three, right?
This, this, this chart.
Correct.
With, with this chart.
That ain't gonna happen though, is it?
No.
I mean, let's, let's be real here. It's going to be more vehicles, right?
Correct. And if there was more vehicles, essentially, you'd be.
More money. You're going to spend more money because you've got more vehicles, right?
Correct.
All right. So, now, I don't understand the answer to this. And, and, and I want, I want, you know, I have a look at the C P I, you know, I mean, their chart should be to look at the lease. Because I'll tell, and if this print is a little bit, I'm going to have to have them like, I get, I get, I get to know where it is, look, I'll be as well for it. Give me a big one, a big font. But anyway, so, as a practical planner, um, the county and the sheriff aren't owning any vehicles. And at the end of, when you get to, um, year whatever, would be here twenty twenty, one twenty-three, right?
Essentially.
Essentially. Okay. And how do you get money back when you don't own any vehicle and when you don't have any mileage? And I, I looked at some of these, these mileage, um, if you, on the very top thing, where it says the full-size sedan, like, the annual mileage is thirteen miles.
Yes, sir.
Our sheriff here, um, on our regular meeting this week, he said that he took thirty thousand miles on a vehicle in a year, right?
He does, yes.
Okay.
Not, not all of that he did, but.
Well, they, well, it would add a gap of about thirty thousand per vehicle.
So, this is actually your figures and your numbers for the mileage patterns? They're working out why it does do go that thirty, twenty-five to thirty thousand miles?
Yeah, I did, I did look there on that. And all I did was I listened to, to our, to our sheriff, to the high sheriff, of what he said.
So, wouldn't, wouldn't this vehicle, we could, again, there's no mileage restrictions with us. We can structure it twenty-five thousand, we can structure it fifty thousand miles. It's all over the state.
Okay. What happens? Okay. Say you lease, you know, I would say it was like a three-year lease.
We, we were talking maybe two years for administrative vehicles and three to four years for patrol vehicles.
Let's talk about the patrol vehicles, because they're the ones that, that.
Correct.
You know, there's a market for them, right?
Right.
Chasing folks and that sort of thing, going to scenes and that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's say we've got a really wanted, wanted vehicle, hard, right? Okay. Okay. Um, is it going to be more residual? Would you get that on a rental vehicle?
I thought so. Again, we're going to be coming out at least quarterly, you know, three, three, four times a year and checking it up on.
Right.
Not to inspect them, but just to show you, hey, if we're going to the new car market, what's the replacement we're looking at next time, how's the mileage pattern, how's everything going with the program, what's, what's causing issues?
Hoopti armor.
Hoopti armor, anyway. So, at the end of, at the end of term, you guys get all rights to the resale of these vehicles. They're, they're on an open in equity lease. So, what does that mean?
We can buy them back.
Exactly.
If, if, if they're sold and lose their money. If we can buy, we can buy the vehicle after it's got a hundred thousand miles on it, right?
Or you, or we can sell them to your behalf and you would retain title and all, all proceeds.
So. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. You can sell it for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, in actuality, we're buying it then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we get title to a vehicle that's got a hundred thousand miles on it. I'm talking about the rough vehicle. Okay. All right. So, now we own the vehicle, and you say that you can sell it for us after we buy it. And what's the difference between what we buy it for and what it's sold for? You see what I'm trying to tell you?
That's a great question. The way that, the way that we structure our leases is, we write it down, we're, we're doing book value on our books. So, let's go back to that same truck, for example. You bought it for twenty-five thousand dollars. On our books, we have it for five thousand dollars. You're only paying down with twenty thousand dollars. Four years down the road, we.
We didn't mind, though, we leased it.
Or leased it. Let's.
See, I mean, incidentally.
And I think that we're going to call it off in the word lease, and that's where we're not a, a traditional lease. This is on an open in equity lease. So, yes, lease is in the term.
Are you talking about a lease with option to purchase? Is that what you're talking about?
You can, you can purchase it, but there's, there's no point in purchasing a vehicle that's a hundred and fifty thousand, hundred thousand.
I agree a hundred percent. And, and if I'm, and I'm in the public and, and, and you're selling it, you know, I do see these ex-police vehicles that, that run around, and I know who buys, you know, and you know who buys. We did, you, you know who buys, and, and I wouldn't give you a hundred bucks for it. Number one, worn out. Number two, I have Marty chasing me, you know, with a drug dealer in the vehicle. You see what I'm saying?
So, that's great, great, you know, quote, you're bringing up, and, you know, as, as a company, we've been doing this for over sixty years. So, essentially, we have two million vehicles on the road. We sell one point one million of those every year. We're not trying to sell just for the junk dealer, the next, the next charger.
What you brought to mind?
What we're trying to do is figure out, so we have on our books, going back to that example, we have on our books for reduced book value, we take it to market. We sell that truck, we had it on our books for five thousand dollars, we actually sell it for nine thousand dollars. You actually would get the four thousand dollar difference of equity to roll back into the next round of lease.
To go back into the next, or.
It's your, your decision.
Next contract.
It's completely your decision on what you want to do with the money. We can.
Or you go back to general revenue.
Or put it back into the general fund. You can put it into a different, different avenue. It's completely your decision on where you want those funds to go. Enterprise makes the recommendations.
Say I would just don't give anything back.
So, again.
Doesn't roll back in.
What we're, what we're doing is keeping you guys informed throughout the life of the lease of what the actual equity position is. With us knowing where the, where the current market is, we have projections and know, hey, we're can't sell these vehicles rather than utilizing this in auction or W. We have a ninety thousand new buyer to go out and.
Sir, your chart on equity.
Yes, sir.
Got zero from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-eight.
Correct. With that, zero.
Now, zero means zero in meaning.
Absolutely. So, and with that, we didn't want to show, you know, conservative, want to be as conservative as possible, and didn't want to show, hey, you're going to get five thousand dollars every truck that you get with us. That doesn't make sense. We want to make sure that you guys are actually in upright positions throughout the life. So, once the partnership actually shows, showing kind of a, kind of gets a.
All I know is that every sheriff's department I've called that are currently leasing in Platte County has signed on, so they actually just ordered their first batch of vehicles in Platte. So, they don't know what, what the result is then.
They don't yet. But now, we have, other sheriff's departments have been using them for years, you know, and, and everybody says it's the best thing they ever did was their lease. That, that, that they save money.
Is it because of the reduced maintenance cost? Is that?
That's a huge part. And some of these departments have huge lease.
Right.
Talking about several hundred vehicles.
Right.
You know, but still, it, it's, maintenance of a big generation lease. When you have a vehicle under warranty versus having the paper against none, you know.
Right.
Well, the warranty, let me ask another question. The warranty is with the manufacturer. The warranty is not with the off.
Correct.
And your lease provides that there is, I haven't even looked at it, but I guarantee you, I think, watch out, somebody guarantees something, that it says we don't warrant it, and if you've got a warranty problem, you go back to the manufacturer.
So, we go back to the manufacturer with you. Again, with us being.
Does it say that? Does it say that?
Does she go back with us?
Um, you don't know yet.
But we fight for good little assistance all the time. So, if the, if the vehicle has just gone out of that warranty, and we, and simply have good records of what's happened, we're the worst provider or purchaser of, you know, Chevy products.
The warranty on cars.
That's probably, that's not the manufacturer. I mean, the Chevrolet is from thirty-six. The Dodge is like the Dodge five one hundred. Yeah. So, Dodge, so with Dodge, you guys get up the, Dodge, Alamo.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I believe heavy equipment, I have at least cars and trucks, but Grand Tower furnishes the insurance on that picture. Are y'all furnishing the insurance?
It's still under your, your, uh, your claim insurance that you currently have. Would you have insurance as an option? A lot of times, people just, uh, agencies just utilize their current insurance character and just go for their.
No, or the insurance could be rolled into the lease program?
Yes, sir.
I think it would let, in comparison to.
Look, I guess probably way more expensive. We're part of the sheriff's with fund, so.
They don't want to do that.
Yeah, we don't want to do that. Because they're going to make a profit on every dollar that you pay them, because they're in business.
Right.
Because you did tell me what your profit margin was, and I probably don't want to tell them.
I don't know. Well, it, it really depends on, on how we actually, you know, which, which vehicles are. But again, if we're able to, you know, save you money and be able to do more with less, if we're making money, I don't see how that, you know, the, the margins I'm looking at, go back to the twelve, we could actually get twelve of the pursuit, uh, pursuit rated Durango's for a cash value of ninety-three thousand dollars, whereas you guys going out paying cash for that same, uh, same Durango, um, it's going to be three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. So, what we're trying to do is tailor what the recommendations and getting the actual vehicles in. These are actual, you know, that's a real number for what the lease looks like. But again, we're, we're wanting to make sure that we can maximize your, your cash, your gross things through box, basically.
I have a question, Aaron, did you?
Not me, please, thank you. Just an obvious question made out of our party, or somebody maybe to think about it. Sure, the world is, is, how much does it cost to have one of your guys put the cages and all the electronics equipment under them?
It's usually around three hundred and fifty dollars a car.
Really? That cage in and all the electronics?
Yeah.
My other point is that you're going to be, it sounds like.
Now, that's, that, that, that's the labor fee for installing it with them. That's not the cost of equipment.
Well, you said you were going to go through the vehicle, but why not go and say this on the.
Right.
If it'll fit.
Well, and that's what we, that's why, like, we did for years and years and years, we would crown big, because everything went from one car to the next. And that's why you try to say with a certain fleet car, like, we were going to buy explorers, well, explorers are ten thousand dollars more per vehicle than the Dodge Durango on Avenue, and there's none available until twenty twenty. For, for, they, they remanufactured the police vehicle, it's a hybrid model, it's not available.
You're going to be changing every two to three years, Martin, like, instead of every ten years.
Yeah.
So, you do these factors, three fifty per, every three years, instead of every ten years, if it'll continue to fit. And then also, I imagine that a car has been.
Over ten years, it's got over two hundred thousand miles on it.
Well, I know your resale value is going to be less, like, controlled with all these holes, and you've got a cage in it, and you've got electronics in it, it's been a normal one, so you're a chip. You used to have ten cars that you, you do a different, once they were ten years, they're probably going to let you go back. These, these cars are going to let you go back in these normal models, they, they can pretty on them all.
That's a great point you brought up with, you know, with the holes or what they call that. What we do, um, we feel that we have certain companies that are waiting for our old sheriff's station. We have the resale channel that we want to kind of steer into. Again, we're not going to make that recommendation for, for, it doesn't make sense, because there's guidance involved with, with updating the vehicle. It takes, you know, either from a week to, to months sometimes for, you know, putting the cables in, putting in all, all those factors. So, it would not make operational sense to have twelve vehicles down every month. So, what we want to do is actually come up with, figure out that optimal whole time. It could be four years, it could be five years. We can, we can likely lease on a three-year term, come to that, that point and say, hey, the market needs to adjust, or your guy loves the truck, he wants to hold on to it a little bit longer, you have the flexibility to, you know, extend that lease as needed. Um, it's completely up to you, but what we want to do is just make, just make sure we're getting the right vehicle at the right price and getting out of it at the right time. Moving on to it for ten years, there isn't, there isn't any resale value left in that absolute record, you know, a hundred dollars, five hundred dollars of debt. If we can actually figure out, administrative trucks, for example, we just, we're about to sell Southern County, you know, first round of admin trucks. They didn't, they are able to actually sell for more than they paid for, and are utilizing the additional funds to go to the next round of vehicles. And then, free, that's a snowball effect. That complicates what the patrol units, that they're getting on the road for, you know, all day, every day, and out there doing twenty, twenty-five thousand or fifteen thousand miles out for, for you guys. And, um, again, with each different lease that we come up with, or each different vehicle application, we don't have that one, five, six, all approach. So, we can structure, you know, what might work for a public force truck that has, you know, utility body and, and all this other aftermarket. There's no way that you need to get in and out of that every two years just because the upkeep costs is so significant. We want to make sure, all right, hold on to it for five years or eight years, but just make sure that we're buying the best, the, the best vehicle at the best time. Um, you know, Martin brought up the, the Explorer, for example, we said, when we found out, hey, they're going to be cutting it off, they're dropping the incentive down on that vehicle, um, and, and they're changing a lot of components, we want to do a, a analysis to figure out, well, Dodge Durango, a lot of entities just went after that one just because of, of the additional incentive money you had out there. Year over year, we're going to go and present a, a cost comparison across all manufacturers. We've seen GM really making a push over the past few years to offer additional incentive money. Um, so, we're afforded, you know, really, obviously, the government expected for years, you can get a lot more money for it, all for a GM product in Ford F-50. Um, at the end of the day, we just wanna get, you know, get some vehicles on the ground, so we wanna make sure that, uh, we provide that to the recommendations. But your decision on what vehicle we go with, and your decision on, um, you know, what makes the most, uh, most financial sense, yes, sir.
Um, couple of other questions now, quick. Um, under this, when you said current fleet equity analysis, and then this, quantity, I suppose, is two thousand nineteen twelve, and then ten and twenty, and then eleven and twenty-one, and nine and twenty-two, and eleven and twenty, twenty-three, and instead of resale, a thousand dollars, is that the current, what, the value of the-
So, so that was, uh, that, that thousand dollars, that's assuming you were still a worse offender, just a thousand dollars to this other vehicle for that. So, again, we're not adding, or we're not adding full vehicles to the fleet, we're replacing full vehicles in the fleet, so just saying-
And then, and then in two thousand twenty, it says two thousand dollars, and then twenty twenty-one, it says thirty-five hundred dollars, and then twenty twenty-two, sixty-five hundred dollars, and twenty twenty-three, eighty-five hundred, that's more vehicles then, right, that are leased?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay, well, your, your lease means, I've got a lease fleet. Because on twenty twenty-three, they're leasing fifteen vehicles, and you divide eighty-five hundred by fifteen, you're not even going to get a thousand dollars.
Seven, I, I think you've got eighty-five hundred vehicles. A vehicle, so, so that next line down, you're looking at the ninety-three, ninety-three five, that I mean the total? So what that, what's going to, this is, is supposed to read is, you're ones who are getting rid of twelve vehicles, on average, they sell for a thousand dollars. Once we start doing the fill off effect we were talking about, selling a two-year-old truck, they're gonna get a lot more money than a ten-year-old Crown Vic, can we all agree on that?
Right.
So what we're gonna start seeing is, is the down effect, once we actually are selling new vehicles at the right time, this, this equity in your lease is actually these numbers, as you see, year over year, it's just gonna start snowballing, adding into your-
You've got, you've got a double asterisk here on the bottom in red. And look at that one, somebody from Philadelphia wrote this one. Estimated current fleet equity is based on current fleet site and scene, and can be adjusted after physical inspection.
Correct, so-
What does that mean?
So when I, when I get the fleet data, uh, they send me the, the VIN, and the mileage of these vehicles. We have a fleet driving manager who, he sits there in, um, in the lab all day, and runs numbers, and says, hey, this vehicle, you're, what, out of resale actually looks like? Uh, we actually put, put values on your vehicles, the numbers actually significantly more than that thousand dollar mark, this way.
Wait, wait. When I go to trace my vehicle in on a new vehicle, uh, they don't base it on site and scene, it's way in the business. The man comes out and looks at it, now, it's really based on what's the year model and how many miles it's on, but he still comes out and looks at it, because if he doesn't come out and look at it, he's crazy, he's already wrote his mind, and mind, and mind, and mind. So how many of these things do they, do they come out and look at, or do they just-
So, so for a, for a free consultation analysis, my fleet guys, exactly, when you come down here, once you actually take your vehicle to market, we're gonna take up the vehicle, drive the vehicle, they think exactly where it needs to go, and it's your decision on if that dollar amount makes sense for the resales.
I, I can tell you when we take them to auction now, they average to eight hundred or a thousand dollars for Crown Vic. That would happen, yeah.
Uh, but again-
You haven't done with a, you haven't done with a ten-year-old Durango either, have you?
Have a double D. But we won't be, because they'll be rolling out before they're even old, that's why your residual value would be higher, because you're rolling it out sooner.
And then this net cash, it's got three asterisks on it, and they add some very small numbers. The net cash is the sum of the ten-year savings from the fleet planning analysis and the estimated current fleet equity.
Correct, so, so what that is, is the combination of the savings of your operating expenditures, again, new vehicles, last-minute expenditures, we went over everything that we covered in the warranty, you're in, with damage standards, vehicles are required, year over year, they come out and have better fuel economy, so there's gonna be a shifting of the policies there. Um, and then next would be the, um, the equity of these vehicles.
Yeah.
Again, as you're selling new vehicles, you're not getting a thousand dollars for it to be, if, if I sold a two thousand sixteen truck right now for a thousand dollars, I don't know how it'd stop.
How does that-
There's, there's no possible way, so if we're selling a, a two-year-old or a three-year-old truck, we can all agree that truck is gonna have a pretty bad motor left in it, that ten-year-old truck. But this one is just show, this is the kind of pile of philosophy, once we actually dive into an actual program, we would actually see the cost benefit and see the, uh, see the improvement of, you know, your fleet efficiency.
You mentioned Pottent County, how long have y'all been, uh, is it, is it Pottent County Sheriff?
Yes, sir, so, so, uh, in Pottent County, with, with Citrus County, let me give you a better example, so they're on their third round of doing truck models. They're buying about thirty trucks.
Pottent County is on what round?
They're up, they are, obviously, they're in their second round.
Okay, and you said Citrus County is, is their, their-
Their round, um-
I want to hear a two-year one.
Correct.
One-year, two-year?
One-year, two-year. Um, with, with Citrus, I think they helped them for about nine months, uh, but the, you think, the, the flexibility, uh, in opening up the lease, you can get out of the vehicle at any time. Manufacturers have the minimum hold time, if you guys can't find it, twenty-four thousand dollars today, turn around tomorrow and sell. Manufacturers have situations involved with that. So what we do is figure out when the restriction is to, um, for holding, floating vehicles, and then have the opportunity to sell it at the actual right time. We come down and we, we're on a two-year term, you guys decide, hey, my guy loves this truck, we wanna hold on to it, you have that flexibility. Um, uh, City, Lake City, they've been on, on board with this, uh, program for, um, almost nine, ten years now, so they're, they'd be a more long-term partnership. Uh, I have the article written, uh, kind of about that, and I can provide a closing message, uh, that was written internally, uh, that they internalized from, uh, the fourteen, fifteen budget year, as well as seventeen, eighteen, and then another rollout. Uh, as a company, we knew our real house was in, um, primarily, you know, after vehicles, trucks, stuff like that. Uh, over the past, uh, three, four years, that's when we really got into the merchant response vehicles. So what we're, um, we're now working a lot with Sheriff's offices throughout the state, and each, each different one's coming on with a, a different program. Uh, what we're seeing though, is, is again, we're talking, you know, just doing four vehicles for the same cash value as, as one, uh, one new Durango, essentially.
I'll ask a question, Patrick. Now, I'm gonna try to ask two questions. Can't be, aren't a dumb question, sure, guys. While operating is over a ten-year plan, that if we purchase this vehicle, and we'll get on this plan, are we gonna save this county a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars? Called it the zone, it's not that.
Is that correct now?
Correct.
In the, in the operating, yes, sir.
Yeah, in the operating, yes, sir. The, the net cash, and the total, can you say the net cash should be a hundred and sixty-nine thousand? Now, second question. Is this lease agreement gonna be the combination over the sheriff's office?
Ideally, I'd like to work with the, the tuition as well, and, and work with all, um, all vehicles we got out on the road, we can help out with.
You know, sheriffs everywhere, I guess, everywhere, so, they, they, uh, let's go stand for election, you know, so. What happens when we were to get a new sheriff, and he decides, I don't like those guys, then he turns all this fleet vehicles back into these, and then we got a big mobile bill, and we had to buy all of this.
That, that would be fair with, uh, Sheriff's Office, just making sure that you guys are often with, uh, in the, in the lease agreements you guys do, and have the flexibility to get out of the vehicle at any time. That's what I'm saying, you know, over your contract, two years in, um, the sheriff comes in, decides he doesn't wanna be part of it, uh, you can just buy the vehicle at that point for the, for the book value, uh, rather than, um, rather than holding on, or, we're not gonna come out and recall your, your truck, that, that kind of, I think-
Yeah, I don't wanna be-
Yeah, we don't, I, I, I want, I want sheriffs coming up here, so that's, I'd like this lease agreement, we turn them all back in, I need ten cars, six thousand dollars plate, that's half the job. I mean, I, I wouldn't talk in that scenario. Correct, and that, and that's also the, you know, the company, we don't ever want to put anybody in that, that predicament, and we wanna make sure that, you know, you guys are in a, in the right, uh, position to go up life with the lease. So we wanna, um, you know, stick with you guys, and, you know, as new, new people come in, uh, work with them and educate them, uh, but as Mick talks, um, has talked to agencies throughout the state, uh, they've seen nothing less, you know, positive.
I would urge you to, to, to call references, I mean, that, that, yeah. That, you can get these figures, forty thousand dollars off, right?
Well, I mean, he had to put it, like, in fact, but it's right around that, yeah, for, for-
All right, you, you have forty thousand dollars of the one cent sale tax money that you-
Yeah.
Can that one cent sale tax money be used for a lease agreement?
That's, 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 that's a good question.
How do I, couldn't go down to the lawyer's?
Um-
Is it a capital outlay?
It is a capital outlay. But how, how, how you capital, how, how did capital outlay spend on the lease?
Uh, I think it was like, the state of the answer, before we go into any brothers. I remember that party guy called it down, and then another call.
And now he's calling down as well, I know.
Mister, we asked for the auditor's opinion the last time when we leased our office, and his opinion was that the one cent sale tax dollars could be used for lease payment.
All right, did we do that with the hospital money, to the safe car? You know, we gave the hospital seventy, because too many dollars of the sale tax money. And the hospital, we gave you that back, and we got offered one cent sale tax, which is a lease agreement.
I know that, but, yeah.
So they kinda answered your question, I think, Congress.
It's just on the board, you know.
The hospital wanted sale tax money, which was, which actually is a-
It happened, it happened, um, what happened was, we, we did check with the bond counsel, remember, we got a, um, we got a, um, a, um, an opinion on that, because it, I think it was a, you know, wasn't some kind of, um, CCB, C, MRI, MRI equipment?
Yes, I believe it was.
It was, it was, yeah, and it was leased, now, I don't know whether it was a lease to buy that, or, you know, I don't know.
I think that the MRI case, they did wind up with the final machine of the purchase.
Of the purchase, yeah.
Now, we couldn't ask for a bond counsel on this, because we've already paid off that bond, the hospital.
Right, the bond's been paid off, yeah.
Yeah, so. Well, I've heard it's all sounds pretty good, I mean, Conrad, there's a bottom thorough question.
Absolutely, and, and absolutely, for your part, we recently awarded the fourth law contract, you'd be in NDA with the known one, um, you know, fleet management helps you out there, a lot of agencies are feedbacking off that contract, uh, to make sure that, you know, we're sharing our best practices and doing exactly what we're, we're, uh, uh, do. Um, but I just didn't, you know, just pin vehicles, just as, as easy as that's possible, um, our projected numbers, um, the, the pin trucks are twenty-eight thousand dollars, they cash two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, would be your cash value to get those pin trucks. I'm proposing seventy-eight thousand dollars as a cash value for these pin trucks year over year. Uh, at the end of term, again, you're gonna have projected equity in these vehicles, um, that number's right, right at, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars of additional money to go into the next round of vehicles. So, again, this is gonna be a fill off effect, and once we actually, you know, are in, um, you know, in these vehicles, you're not gonna start seeing the, 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 you know, you know, this might be a good thing for, like, for groups, like, in property trading office, where you can totally trust other a couple of years or whatever, it costs him less money than just buying a vehicle outright.
We're gonna bring us over here on this side, for you here too.
Yeah, I mean, because you don't have to install a bunch of equipment else.
Right.
Uh, when you said-
I have a question, Aaron.
When you said property, um, Milos Bungo is the, um, is director for, uh, property business down in, uh, Rivard County, and Reverend's reached out to him, he's seen that, and that's from, uh, from our program with them, so, um, you know, Lake City's another great one, Miami Gate School, um, Al, um, out there, just seeing huge improvements, just to the overall improvement tools that, uh, new vehicles come with. Um, just with, um, you know, again, drivers, they see, they see the aspects that come along with, uh, you know, two thousand nineteen vehicle versus the two thousand seven Crown Vic, it's, you know, significant, so, um, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, or, you know, don't expect, you know, to be, to be taken by any of you, um, so, you know, the more references, and the more people you get to talk to and understand the, the philosophy behind it, the, the better.
He's getting all those names.
He, he's one of those names, um, and their contact information's on the, uh, blog, yeah, because you just email that somewhere? Just a, and then email me with that lease agreement. Al Martin sent a digital copy of, you know, all this presentation, and kind of just, the, the whole breakdown of, you know, what we're, what we're proposing, and, uh, if there's any, any language, um, in the contract, it needs to be redlined. We, uh, I can go back to our corporate office, just kind of the general matter lease agreement, we have covered it, so we can, um, you know, work on your behalf, and make sure that it, it makes sense in, uh, public court.
Conrad, on county procurement policy. Do they have to be declared a sole force leasing company before the board does not have to ask the board for a lease deed?
Which comment would need to, uh, ever time.
I mean, there's, there's other leasing companies out there that can probably offer the board the same, uh-
My first, uh, one question that, that I've been thinking about is, two thousand lease agreement, is the county or is the sheriff?
Well, I, I, I think it is, the sheriff's vehicle, sheriff's side of the lease.
Yeah, but I think, I think what the sheriff was doing when, when he came, was just to tell y'all-
What he planned to do.
What he planned to do, yeah. And so, um, and if he has, you know, the ability to use, was that twenty-five percent, yeah?
Three.
Three years, um, he signs the agreement, and, and the county doesn't have any liability.
Well-
Well, you have a lot of, when, when you come back, go back to-
Budget, right.
Well, our, but, our, we have a responsibility to, we have, we would issue purchase orders, and we have to make sure, like, when you're talking about the one cent money, we control the purchasing, and we have to follow our own procurement procedures. So, to answer, so one of the questions I had for Marty, is how we would work, would, would we need to do an RFP, or the leasing services, or could they purchase on our behalf from the, you know, the-
You could piggyback somebody, you could piggyback somebody. Like, if you're in Monty County, we could piggyback, any of those that just, just entered into this agreement.
But those are the thoughts that came into my mind, and then picking up the one cent money.
And I think they're also listed as preferred providers of all the sheriff's association.
Right.
Did we?
But if, if there is, if at the end of the lease, if we use one cent money to purchase, as, and that's in a separate fund, not fund, but that's in a separate department, those funds are kept separate. So at the end of the lease, um, as far as if those funds are returned, would, would they, would they go back to the one cent fund? I mean, we separate those funds remarkably.
I think that the sheriff would totally agree that any residual money would go back into the one cent sale tax fund, because you're giving him that money for capital outlay purchase.
I mean, I don't wanna get into the lease with all of that before-
I want you to know, if, if Sheriff's Officer, whoever is doing this, is buying it with tax money or sale tax money, because you got two different things there. So, on the county, they'd have bought it from their, uh, their, 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 from the cap also, and not through a sale tax.
So anything purchased with the one cent money does go through the county's purchasing, um, you know, we do the purchasing, um, and, and-
The same thing you did with the scanner, the sheriff signed the contract for the scanner, but it's coming out of the one cent sale tax. In front, with the one cent scanner.
But we still had to get bids and all of that stuff, I mean, we, we couldn't, there was, I mean, we still had to get, follow the policy.
We followed the policy where they were sold for, but if, if they're preferred providers of the, of our sheriff's association on that bid list, and, and they're buying the vehicle at the FSA bid quality, then-
But I, I think the one on the scanner, it set up on three-year lease plan.
We set it up on three, yeah.
Three, because the county has limited the sheriff to twenty-five percent for three years, that might have to be set up.
Well, the sheriff's gonna have to have the money whether it comes out of the one cent sale tax for, for capital outlay, or whether it comes in twenty-five percent of the one cent sale tax at capital outlay. We replace all capital outlay in our budget with the one cent sale tax money. So it's gotta come out of one of the others, so if, if he enters into the agre- agreement, and it's coming out of one cent sale tax, and decides he can't have it anymore, then it's gonna have to be added into the general revenue budget.
That's right.
So, I mean, it's just something to think about, it'd be the same way, whether you're buying cars, or leasing cars, or whatever you're doing, if you do away with him having the one cent sale tax portion, then it's gonna have to be added back into the budget of capital outlay.
Don't be asking my side of the question.
Make your mind to, make your mind to.
My, well, I'm with it. Two, two other suggestions for staff to do, one, I know that you said in the beginning, two, the three-year picture, uh, start with what was happening in the last three years?
Correct.
I would probably suggest we get a ten-year vision, instead of the three-year vision, to, to include new merchants, as well as, I think it's a big change here, to the last name, that's right. And it would be fair to ask Danielle, who works for Sheriff's Department, what's our ten-year vision on what we sit on the sheriff's fleet? If you're ready to do a ten-year vision for a year, and it's taking me, if you're, well, I don't know how you recommend you go-
That'll be skewed a little bit in the fact that vehicle pricing has increased exponentially over the ten years, especially.
Well, I believe the ten-year, maybe here.
This was three.
Three.
It, it took the last three to split, so, and I would suggest maybe like a little, maybe, a little more, right?
I'm watching how the lease is gonna be for the period of three years. Right. Uh, and finally, I would suggest calling, um, the finance officers of these places that you have for the two or three years.
Not necessarily, I thought, oh, one, one of the finance officers, people are asking to pay the, the bill, uh, the ones that, the finance rate, of course. Whatever the one that can tell you, are we doing better, or we do it work?
Exactly, your sheriff's office, that's gonna be their finance rate, or you need the sheriff's office to pay the bill.
I would disagree, I think you're gonna, what you just said, we go to the sheriff, we go to the-
No, what I'm saying is, if the sheriff's office leases vehicles, it's gonna be their finance rate, or you need the sheriff's office to pay the bill. Now, what I'm saying is, if the sheriff's office leases vehicles, it's gonna be their finance director's gonna be on the table. They're paying the bills out of the general revenue fund. And I'm gonna say, they're going to the county commission finance director, they'll give you money. They're gonna know ultimately, are we spending more or less than the sheriff's office did? You know what I'm saying? No. Because whatever's in our budget is part of the line item. They may or may not put that out to tell you what they put on vehicles or didn't put on vehicles. They don't have to, so. Usually I like to say.
Yeah, you say actually, early on, you said we actually sell the vehicles for more than we bought them?
Yes, sir. Matter of fact, I would. Well, here, here, how you do it? You share, a GMC.
Because you have the cover.
I'm still, uh, whatever the GMC version, still rocks, the Sierra. GMC Sierra for. You can't buy that vehicle for twenty-eight thousand, but we can, okay? And, and you have, you have to maintain that vehicle for, because of manual backer restrictions, correct number time. But still, two years down the road, the forty thousand dollar vehicle is still worth twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand dollars. So, that's, that's how, that's how they're being.
I think the enterprise is administrative, well, probably not control.
Probably not control, but administrative it definitely would. And, and that's what they're saying, I mean, they, they look at the market every single day. I mean, Enterprise is a huge company, but they, they, they look at the market every day. They know what the vehicles are doing. Now, we're not gonna make that, that recommendation on a Toyota that's going out and, you know, in the city, or, you know, in the rafter and stuff like that, but if it's a property freighter is going point A, point B, it's going, it's going through from the office, we, I can highly tell that I've been. I just wanna say to the board, we didn't half-assed when we come across this and actually have it presented to you. We did a lot of research on this and we called all these offices that are currently using them and every one of them had good things to say, that they all save money.
Okay, well, I, I think we've been, you know, talking about this for a long time. So, thank you for coming and doing a presentation and answering the question. And, um, I don't know, I guess it ultimately will be up to you all.
To the sheriff.
Yes.
I'll, I'll, I'll.
I think the sheriff's.
Yeah, well, that's something y'all.
Still only a little bit, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, it's long before it really.
Well, let's go back, we'll, we'll have a lot of time to, look, it'll leave once, once you get it and, um, then, then you go from there.
Yes, and these are, well, they're, they're, you know.
Yeah, ideally, you know, it was one of, you know, it was gonna be such a good concept to you guys and, you know, we'd love to help out the sheriff's office, you know, county vehicles would be great, you know, next step. And I'd love to put together an actual model of what, you know, a whole, you know, whole, whole looking product.
Well, who thinks of this, Johnson, did you, so, um, um, county administrator, uh, they want to contact you up about it? And, and, uh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you being here.
Anything else, contact information on here and, uh, do have them on the, the, the.
Thank you.
Conrad, if you have something, we can email you or, or, I can, she'll come over here, I'll, I'll.
Okay, we gotta go on to, I don't remember, the board can discuss the FDOP rotating priority list.
I just wanted to give you a minute to look over the package, um, that I handed out. I try to represent the information, um, as easily as I can myself, um, and try to give you as much information I can about the suggested priorities submission to Florida Department of Transit. This will be for year twenty twenty.
And what do you think about twenty twenty-three?
Okay, this priority list will be for twenty twenty-three submissions to the program. So, we will submit it now and twenty 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 to Albert or to your twenty twenty-three. Now, included in your package is a copy of last year's, um, letter to DOP with the number, with the, uh, roads listed. And I also gave you, um, the standard fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four by your plan from DOP. So, the majority of the roads that you, um, that we will focus on in the DOP plan is the highway local roads and the off-state highway systems also, which, um. Well, do you think you want to push up? Or do you think number? Yes. And I think y'all have seen this list before. Is that anything different? I recapped it on the first page that I had that you know from Dennis.
Law Road and Gas Plant Road, they've been on this, this, year, year, and years.
And they are currently awaiting design.
A lot of those, I mean, you're waiting to design.
Very long, okay. So, we have, um.
First, we had a timeframe in two thousand eighteen, and then moved to two thousand twenty. And now there's no time to even step back.
Well, I believe the, the way the roads are listed is in, probably in time order. So, San Pedro Road is not for bid. House Road is in design with twenty twenty construction. Pine翠Street in design. North, Eastern North Ellison Road, right away from Little Tending. Pollock House Road is designed and Water and Gas Plant Road are awaiting design.
So, does that, I mean, be the, for all of these?
It may be.
Maybe it is.
Well, I don't know how to answer that, I'll, I'll get an answer.
I'm sorry, I wish you on the spot.
It's okay, I don't wanna answer for, for, without asking directly. But I can say if you look, if you look at, like, what? Law Road has a date of twenty twenty construction, what it looks like.
Twenty twenty, mm-hmm, and we have to start it over there. All right, let's do the work.
Well, you can ask as soon as you want, I might not be able to answer them directly. So, the suggested priorities submission is for, um, I forgot the right year. From what staff has, has presented, is Spring Warrior Road, Buckeye State Union Road, and the Gable Road in that order. And that's based upon, takes the pavement conditions for, it's assigned, um, by DOP and Public Works Director. So, it's based upon severity. So, we're looking out to twenty twenty-three, but I wanted to provide you the current information so we even have a snapshot. But I, I will get an answer for you.
Okay, now, um, uh, San Pedro was out from bid. And, um, Ellison Road, um, we're waiting for the Broadway, um, approval.
And that's ordered there.
Which is pretty much say that, that San Pedro and, uh, Eastern North Ellison will have construction this year in twenty nineteen, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
And that's what we've been given in the past, that it was, is nineteen. And then, uh, as a reminder, um, San Pedro goes, um, we have a commitment to pay Ellison's rent. And we have a commitment on the Ellison Road to pay Henderson's banner. They're both very short, that we, we made a commitment to a lot of people several years ago. And I'll try to keep up with that as everybody well knows. And these people are depending on that and we promised them and I wanna make sure that we don't forget that.
That is a model, isn't it, thank you?
Yeah.
That commitment is a model, you know. You know, you have some San Pedro, House Road, Pancress, Ellison, Coles, but all, Law Road, that's not yet, but. Isn't it something, you have those, that commitment is a model, so, didn't get them good, possible, yeah? My thought's somebody, it looks like the mom, when we leave, we don't have.
Right.
I just can't ans, I, I don't, I can't answer the question of why it's taken so long for them to get to this point just because I'm stepping into this.
Yeah.
Um, but this is my understanding of where we are today, that I wanted to provide to you.
Well, can I ask you this one? You know, instead of, I'll ask you more questions.
All right.
Back to that, your road, it's been listed on a list for a long, long time. And that's got leased fraud by two other roads. And you said that this is because FDOP and county staff prioritize the needs of those other roads ahead of this road.
My understanding.
Uh, what, what do you have a board champion mission for? Why are we doing all this if somebody else is gonna prioritize the road? That's what frustrates me.
I understand, and I would, I like that question. I, and.
Uh, I feel like, wait a minute, you prioritize the road and I see this over, 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 and then, and then suddenly you tell me, you tell me, this is on a list. Yeah, it's supposed to come up in years, whatever, X Y Z. And then suddenly the priorities all change.
I feel the same way.
You feel the same way, right?
I really do.
Yeah.
I got those, uh, that, you know, plantation roads.
Plantation roads are.
We got all the plantation roads for four years, yeah, we, you know, we, along the way, who, who, back there, I mean, what do you want to get? I'm talking, you got a day with them.
Well, y'all remember when it happened here, how many roads?
Our roads, they're there since I've been on this boat and it's still.
I hear that.
It's still in design and is constructed twenty twenty. Yeah, well, I should say that I've been here for over eight years now and the San Pedro and the Eastern North Ellison and Pancress was on the list when I got here, over eight years of that, um, so.
I remember you saying, man, plantation, remember you had a wreck on that curve? Remember you saying that, didn't you say you had a wreck on that curve?
I didn't have a wreck on that curve, but I've, I've had quite a few, I've had friends over in that area and, um, I've had them to, to, you know, bring it to my attention that it's such a dangerous place. And it is, all that curve, it's narrow.
It, it, I'm more sure, it's on a town, everybody, it's certainly from twenty-seven and everything, nine pound fair, I'm like that.
Right, and we used to live on that curve and our runoff was run over all the time.
Then my boat, right there in that curve, it's been broken off and then they use them for stops there and it's like, there's been any wrecks on that curve, it needs widening to be done.
Well, the thing is though, the ones that have been on here the longest time, it, it seems like to me that we would go by whenever they were put on the list, it's gonna be occasional that was put on the list and then yours was put on the list to head here and somebody else was connected, we could go by when they were put on the list. Well, I think, you know, when Kent was talking to y'all about that, he said that he was trying to keep the plan to the point where the scraps and skates standing could be used to the highest level because some of that is, hey, seventy-five, twenty-five mats and then some of the hundreds, one of those programs, a hundred pounds. And he tried to keep maybe the longest road on the top so they pay for them with the, the money that they save at the county rather than the usual level. I think that's what.
Who can say what's good and.
Kent did, that the wood top, it was about a three.
Another word, Kent, is, it's a driving one, right?
Well, he's trying to get the roads that maximizes your, your dollars with the skates and scrap.
They go around, based upon the condition and.
Oh, mm-hmm, right. And that makes sense to me, yeah. I mean, with him doing that, he's trying to get the most money for the buck. And I, I can't criticize him for doing that.
I think, I mean, I think if ours didn't go right down the road and wanted to work safe, needs to be at the top of the list.
Well, that's my understanding of what you said.
Just like House Road, it needs, it's a dangerous road to get the water traffic.
And I think that's one reason why it's been put off to twenty twenty is because either the scraps or skates is gonna be used on that road.
Yes, yes, right.
Well, I think, what I see, and I get my luck. I've been on the floor fourteen years and I've gotten three roads stayed. Wood Street Road, which is the bigger. And Ocean Road, that's that. In the district, the other landowner, he did my district, that's a pretty good sized road. And that little Andrew Lee Road, it's been for a while long. I guess the old enough, that's pretty little road, say, all in fourteen years.
You haven't got an unpaid road in your district, Mr. Page, go ahead.
I, 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 I came into the district where they have a lot of paid roads and they call it a park. I eat all the roads. But I, I'm at the point where the way things work, just turn all the roads, saving money over to Kenneth and let him decide what he wants to do. You know, I, I take a lot of that. It's tough to decide. Who runs the show down here? We have a responsibility to ask him to sit. And, and you make a decision and then you change things before you ever get anything done here. I'm just frustrated.
Now, it was my understanding that he has a list and he takes from the, you know, top of the list, it goes on this list and then the list continually moves up. I can clarify with you.
Well, we had, we had Law Road all prior, kind of, you know, that one, you did hack that one. And I figured a little bit about that, but not all that long, three miles long. You both had, both parts. I think it should've been, should've had that one. Uh, but, and, yeah, I, I figured that. I think you, I think you get a drift where I.
Sure I do. And I, I, you know, Kenneth is not here, but when, when things come up and he feels like that he can get more bang for the buck by doing whatever, maybe a suggestion would be come and talk to us about it. Instead of, we get a paper and, and then all of a sudden we realize that something has been changed and I said, how did this work too? And then we're gonna, how did this happen? And we've never really got a clear answer, I kind of understand it tonight. But I think maybe more communication, but the things that we've already told our people, I'm not willing to back up on that because, uh, I don't wanna go through that.
Well, and then the letter that we wish to submit, it's for twenty twenty-three, um, submission. I just provided you with all the information so you would, you would be able to see a snapshot of where we are.
I don't understand why I get the priority when a mile of paving is a mile of paving and no matter if it's no sin to count it, it's a big, you know, it's, you know, a mile and a mile of paving and a half a mile is the same property, you know, widening and re-ferencing. It doesn't matter who gets who different, then, it's the, the one person. Exactly, so I don't see where I got that list. I have priority to say, I ain't got time for the buck come from, I don't understand.
When they, when they last funded.
Because you don't have a local match to do the power, length of the road. The states cut up, scotched and traveled about twenty-five percent of fifty percent. If you don't have a match, you're gonna do eight miles and the road's twelve miles, kind of what. You got four miles, you can't make it, that doesn't make sense for a, uh, and you call it a little relation, saying, I like it now. You're jumping, little road, little road, you're gonna get locked up, making buck.
I understand, that's why I give it, I don't know.
I'm telling you now, just explain what he said, I, I'm in perfect way when he said that, talking about.
Been a deal this month, so then it's just.
Well, I'll have to pick the front, typically to get food, that's it, so we may want to.
I mean, you get a hundred yards of road to jump.
And you always have the option, I think you're okay, you always have the option, you definitely find some money somewhere and pay it one hundred percent on yourself, you just make your sense, you know, like, do that, he's trying to.
No, 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 that's not, that's not frustrating.
I understand, but, my.
I think you're doing a good job.
My question to the board is, for the twenty twenty-three submission, I mean, this, this is the list and, and it doesn't, this is ba-
My question to the board is, for the twenty twenty-three submission, I mean, this, this is the list, and, and it doesn't, this is based upon his, um, on our recommendations to D O P. We would like to submit this letter, and then if you would like more, um, we can certainly come back to the board and, 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 and he can explain in depth about our, our road priorities. Okay, now, just like here, it's gonna, this, or do this run, but there is also a good chance San Pedro Road will not have sufficient funding to complete the road as this, so we may want to add it back to the list.
That's the one you already done part of it.
San Pedro, no, none of it's been done, none of it's been done.
What's that road gonna buy the church now?
He's really said about it, thanks. Big street, not San Pedro.
Well, it was painted all over the hell out of there, and he stopped, and he went back to himself.
Was it not correct, or what? I'm not sure, um, I, I just thought this is bad for me, and I will clarify that. I am not exactly sure, I mean, I asked him for updated info so I could give the board a snapshot of it, because I knew there would be questions as soon as I said, "Right, baby." I, I understand, and I understand their frustration, um, so I will get some clarity about that, because then that makes me wonder about, oh, what's the person he's been there on? Well, that's always right, same time. You know.
That other road we said, uh, uh-
They are.
They're gonna do that on.
And of course, the agreement was, when we had that room's little people here, was that it made more sense that if it was ever gonna get done, order from all, that's all we're talking about. That while they were there, resurfacing and had all the equipment there, that it would be more cost effective to do it then. We're never gonna, uh, pay somebody to bring all their equipment in to paint a quarter mile road, that will never happen. So, as long as they're already there, if that one like that, and we, we don't have-
We did that, we did that.
So, so.
We did that one, one of the-
Really, that's just like, uh, hot roads, and the other road, hand in hand, they get the same amount of stuff, the road does a good amount of thing in, in top four first, right? And when they do, out roads, they do it up the road, you know, that one, that one, that, I mean, the same thing, what you, what you, you know, you got the equipment out there, you need to do that. One back actually, I mean, that's fire, that's already there, but, I mean, you, it does the driving, that. It's, it's just like our roads, and it gets a same amount of traffic, just through there, and I would give you, I was coming, you were not there.
You know, we've got, we, this county has really, um, I don't know, I, I don't know the history of all of this, 'cause I've only been here for eight years, but as you thought around, we have a lot of bad roads.
Fun water, you could get that.
Of them, and I, I was confused, and my district's been around all the time, I'm saying, how many years and years and years will it be if ever? And the roads are deteriorating, and I, I don't see how we can ever catch up with it.
I don't think we can get enough scrap and scrap money to keep up the roads that we already got paid.
No, we don't, we don't.
And then, then when you add another road, save another, and then you got, you got more money.
You got high water, really, it's just, all that rain, that, that road. You got stuff kicking out the middle of the, the line road, that water, now, we can grass the roads and the line road.
You got the farm road, that's been brought up, and old roads, uh, that's long that I worked for the last two years.
Will we need some of the long dead, uh, tax, long, typical roads?
In the truck.
I believe, he's a, to that comment, I believe he is, because the order stays.
Oh, it stays, uh, infrastructure and not, and breaking, correct?
What it says is capital improvement, including but not limited to the guy.
And truly, but what?
But not limited.
Right, I looked at some of the, the statutes today, and under some of them, it goes into all about roads and that kind of stuff, but I don't, um, that, that the French say in the sort of, that's not what you're, um, that covers all that road, the key guys designated that type.
Yeah, and, and, you know, ladies, we've been talking about, there's no curve.
Did make it, that kind of road.
Well, I believe, I believe that, because our agreement with D O P was that we would have paid the right of way before we asked for property stock funding.
And when we own land.
We sent out more letters, I could, I could not find any information on that, where we were, so we basically started from scratch. And the property owners, who, we did not know if they had made contact, we sent out new letters, uh, what we thought was last year. Yeah, I would probably guess that probably that's the first that happened, what you just did, but, um, so when we get the, get that back now, um, who, how much you remember, who's gonna pay for the acquisition? So that's our county money. Can any of the recovery money be used for that? So here's what I'll say about the recovery money, and this is, you know, I've had only a little time to try to catch up. But my understanding of the recovery money is that everything designated in the state expenditure plan is expressly for land acquisition to provide access, water access. Um, we've had several calls with Gulfport some, asking them to help us understand exactly what that means, if we can add properties, when we ask, when we add properties. Our advice was, well, you really might wanna consider taking some of the properties off, because you have a lot of properties, and you have fifteen properties listed now. And in order to move forward, we would need the utility study on fifteen properties, and that's one we already mentioned. So on the seventeen, I have materials for the board, um, that, that will review that. So, I'm, I'm not sure at this time, we can only, I, I, we can make changes to our S E T. But if we get too far off track of what we said our goal was, we will have to file for an S E T amendment. And that goes through a public comment period, and that kind of starts that process over again, but we can do that. I do, and this is more of a discussion for the seventeen, but I, I would encourage the board, um, rest of work together and try to formulate a, a more clear plan. Of what we want to do with the restore act funding.
Yeah.
Even our, our budget is a little confusing, the way the money is laid out within our budget.
We can talk about that in a certain degree, yeah, but, so.
So, I, what I'm hearing the board say is that you want us to come back to the board and talk about our road paving priority in more depth, and be able to answer some questions, and further explain why we use the system we use to determine the pavement, you know, basically determine the severity of the road. Correct?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I know the job, have we been paving every year that you've been here? You haven't been paving every year, there hasn't been enough, maybe a lot of bad money?
Going on every year, I don't know.
Did a little research, one, two, three.
I know it works out there on Johnson's trip and move, but what, what's it?
That's the last, I think, the last one.
Was it? So we tried a couple of years, money on that, that's what we done?
I don't know, we, I wasn't here, we may have. Well, what happens out there, see, that started out, you know, Johnson's trip, makes that timing, turns into Robert's amen road. So just prior to immediately on that, too, part of Robert's amen road was resurfaced. They, they only used the amount of money that they had, it was so far, and then it stopped. And then, after more money was available, after, um, some top four years, then, uh, the Robert's amen was completed and Johnson's trip. Uh, let me just tell you that F D O P did studies on Johnson's trip, and there were several, several fatalities.
Yeah, I remember, I remember.
And so they, they, uh, took all that into consideration, and highly recommended that that dangerous road be, uh, stuck. Now, you look at them, that curve, and there's been a lot of fatalities there.
Years.
And I lost my mother and my aunt on that curve, and there's been people that see it, and say, um, the problem, you know, the problem that we've got, is we, I do believe that we've got some roads that are in worse shape than others, and some that are more dangerous. But then we've got the problem that for eight years, or fourteen years or however long, we've been telling these people, and I've seen them, I've seen them. I have actually sent this to my people, said, "Okay, here it is, and something, your road's gonna be done in my team's period right here." And yes, we're gonna pay this because it was decided, now, we come along and say, "Oh, maybe we're not gonna do that?" I mean, we have asked these people that hired us, I'm not fucking kidding, the way-
It might be done, but I believe.
You know, these people hired us, and we told them something, and we have to tell you, that is your life.
Ten years, six years, going on seven, and out roads have been rolled up every-
Every year, yeah.
And it was before you were here too.
Right, right.
You were.
So, I mean, I don't know, I-
I've heard plantation brought up, I've heard frontwood road brought up all these years, and I, I've heard a duckwood ride brought up, plantation, you know, but they ain't, you know, they-
They're all here.
Yeah, my friend at the end of the table here, Chris and Murphy, that brother, brother, he had his field, it's not on the list, or-
No, it's on the list, it's programmed for twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, the favorite way to do it is, is the one that gets the most traffic, and is in the worst shape.
That's our road, that's the problem.
And most people have been here, and then the road actually been done before.
That's for a secondary road. We use that for secondary rotating, um, that we use the pavement conditions for, for the D O P roads.
Okay, secondary roads, those are the ones that are not paid yet. Is that what a secondary road is?
Well, secondary roads are, yeah, basically, yeah, so.
Unpaid roads?
Right.
Okay. All right, learning something new every night, another fourteen years, I'll have it back.
Okay, thank you for the discussion.
Hey, hey, hey. Don't take this word.
I, I understand.
All, all part of the dad's work, you know? My new friend.
Number six, the board discussed the Blue Creek roll-off site out of Popper Row. This is actually a mission I'm working, um, I am, that we did want to provide the board with the, um, schedule, um, of the roll-off site. So you have it handy, and so I would have it. Is Blue Creek designed as Blue Creek? Yes, I'm sorry, that was, that's probably my fault. Okay, so Mr. Murphy, you want to say?
Yeah, basically, we're trying to, we're trying to make that better, you, and charity, and charity, from uniform, lifting of our hours, even there's different hours and different dump in the town. My constituents want to know how, wanting to know why we have to wait out there only to fill two weekends to go down our track, in which we have to break our day. We have to bop what we're doing in the middle of the day, and we can't do it in the morning, and we can't do it where we don't know the time is ever going. That's wonderful, these questions, the most asked questions I had in my district is, what's going on with this? Why can't we have a uniform, meaning if the dump is in, uh, the north end of the county, it should be open at nine AM, east end of the county, it should be nine AM, what, and it's not? So there should be like one hour, like the uniform site, eight to twelve on the back of the line, that way you know which hall, which line, so, so five hours an hour, uniform throughout the whole thing. That stop sign is uniform throughout the whole thing, so we're trying to get the dump open to be a uniform man. That's, I'm wrong, and I'm P G M, and I've got a dump speed down there, but at the same time, the dump in the north end of the town opens at nine AM, you know? It's a version, they create confusion, and then, since oh six, and that will carry on six, we still can't figure out schedule for the roll-off on that, because we don't have some kind of period time now, we don't have. So we can go there different parts of the week, and the dump is open at a different time, you know? We don't want to get time, we're finding, finding posts is different than any other time in the county.
Well, I think, I, I mean, I would, uh, just hear some a- answering your questions, but I, I, I know that, when I've asked this before, um, I, I think it was because of the, the usage. You know, some of them that are not u- have, some of them that don't have such usage, when they cut their hours, like, for instance, all of them have some that can't use that money, if you kept them up from nine for six, sixty-seven days a week, then it would not be-
It wouldn't be feasible, and that's understandable, but the, the women activity that has happened in the past couple of years, we got more people in them. So we, we have a more, we have more trash, we have more, this dump, what it used to be, this dump needs to be over the night. We're getting away from the trash out there, almost everywhere, so the guy that goes down there, you know, those gates, county worker, he's gotta sit there for twenty minutes, he's got trash in front of the gate. Because people that come down there think that it's nine AM, let's say some, uh, a set of homeowners, you know, who are older than me, but you would figure, because we use them, north end is nine o'clock, south end is nine o'clock, and we did this up the south, it wasn't very, it was understandable, but we can't afford to do so. But the volume has increased, so we need to get that standardized, uh, the time. Now, you say, is this exact moment, is this one, and you know what's happening? We don't have a uniform time schedule for Blue Creek, it's not uniform, that's the challenge. We, we go to the time, they come, y'all are down in there, right, by there, it's just not uniform, because of the-
I don't wanna cut off, Mr. Murphy, but I, I wanna speak to a part-time, beach, river, we use-
And that's what I'm thinking, the beach is going here.
I, uh, my city family, I have a place to drop. And, you know, you down there, and your garbage is in the house, you go out there, get carried garbage off. And one of them, together, the other three families' garbage, he's like, two o'clock. You know, you want, or the town, the government's about to truck, it, I want to say that I agree, that it ought to open early. I don't, I don't know if we need to have that site open seven days a week, because, you know, to make a cost thing for a mess, I don't even know, if this dump's gonna be closed, um-
Well, according to her, that would be like a seasonal effort, meaning that, you know, during scout season, obviously, you want to be seven days a week.
Yeah, well, that's-
Correct, but during a slow period, isn't it?
I, I, I like it up early, you know?
What, what, what my constituents in this district are looking at is that they wanna have a uniform schedule. That south, east, west, north, everybody is single, at nine to five, or whatever, whatever it's five to nine AM. Because again, you gotta wait for two o'clock to go dump your trash, you gotta break your day at two o'clock, and then what you do, the-
Well, you don't have to go at two, you can go at five, or whatever, but here's what, I mean, look, here's what I'm at, it would be great if every dump could be opened from nine to six, seven days a week, two hundred and fifty-five days a year. We sat through a budget session last year, we're gonna be closer about the budget again next Thursday. We're gonna face the same critical issues that we faced last year. And all the services that we can afford them, but a wish list, and a want list, and a need list, we've got to make sure that we don't add anything else that we cannot afford. And I'm not, I, I mean, I have a house down there too, we, it, and we use that one, and we use the one out at Johnson's trip, because we have property out that way too. So we put these cards in our phone, so that we know, okay, this is, because we couldn't remember, using two roll-off, my goodness, you can't, so, but anyway, if we can afford it, I'll say go for it. If we can afford it, then I'll say absolutely not.
Most of the people in John's, they're, they're, they're a free, use Colton's cemetery, dump site, they come do the pop still, they're going down, drop, get, trash off of Colton. And most, I've seen a lot of people there down in Pinkwood.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna down, I bring my garbage to the bitch, and we go out up there, and look, because you know, you can't. Let me back to the question, if we let our solid West director, sudden, this situation come back, and if we can't, well, thank you. You know, take the hours here and there, make it consistent.
It's just a, it's just an ongoing contest down there.
Yeah, and I agree with you, I'll be down there, but we can't get, it's, it's solid, we can't, and you have a complaint. You have, I, I don't know, I can't hear this, check for the birds, go to the tent, I can do that.
So are you saying that, in order to make the number of hours equal, we would reduce the hours at one roll-off site to make up for it at another roll-off?
Well, that's just, no, not necessarily, that doesn't make us the wrong position, he may have a budget, and he can, he can pump an extra two hours, but, or the department, I don't know anyway. So, let the department head evaluate.
Evaluate the situation.
Bring a proposal, and then we'll look at it.
Without increasing the budget, well, and I would, I would respectfully remind the board that that, that department has been, you know, we've had to ask, come to the board and ask for additional funding, at least for the last few years. So I don't, I, it would be hard for me to imagine that anything's changed, but we can certainly look at it.
Well, we're here, I know, to, for, for citizens, and, and, and all follow, I think we, we try to do everything we can to meet the needs and the wishes and everything, but I have to be real, and I said that from last budget session on, we gotta be real about what we can afford before we add any other expenses, because I won't vote for anything that we're gonna add expenses to that we cannot afford.
Well, and I would say, if you look at the scout season, we certainly increased the hours at that particular roll-off site during that time, to try to accommodate as public as we can. During scout season, you know, that, that roll-off site is over from ten to seven. Um, but then in the winter, it's obviously two, two to six during, just during the week, on the weekends, it's ten to six.
Because you can get their opinion and guard the trash off.
I, and, well, I mean, that, that may be the way it has to be, I mean, and if we can afford it, that's right, but if we can't, then that's just, that's reality. That's just popping.
Unless at least get in a right way, and look and see what the rest of the.
Oh, that's what it is, that's how.
I sure don't have cut hours on my Colton's cemetery.
No, I'm not cutting hours, no.
Not that, not that bad, I'd be, no, no. I remember when they, that's right, just the gate, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving along, I don't know, showing the board, discuss productivity reporting, Commissioner Murphy?
Basically, what, what I would like to do is introduce a business technique that's utilized around the world, and it's simple, it's called creating a productivity sheet, some product. Your department head provides productivity sheet, so that way we can audit our office. An audit is only a purpose audit. How do we know to compare and to measure it for an apartment of walking units? To introduce a productivity sheet, improve to the county, for the students. This question has been brought up to me, how, what is the county doing? Well, we have an audit, but it gives us only respect for the purpose of what's going on. If we have a productivity sheet, a policy sheet, this is around the world, you know, not productivity sheet. And it, it, it aids in a tool in the event where you know where you're going, or you're not going. We need to look at these things, this has been brought up to me by the county, we need to have a productivity sheet filling the water, in which we can reflect on annual audit, but basically, auditing, how audit, what are our priorities, what do we have? Other than about the word, word, the reception of a person, word, word, word. But if we don't have a paper trail, we don't have a trail of what's going on. So I think you would be looking into a quality productivity sheet. Show it properly, show it something, give it something handy we have in our hand, to use that, and audit our audit. I don't know if, if anybody's ever done a theory for it, and you would have a productivity sheet, a quality sheet, I don't know if it's, you know, I would imagine it would have one.
But, you know, before I, this very end, uh, could I, I think that you, uh, that what you're saying is, is correct. I had out here, just a lot of, you know, some for about ten years on the board of directors, some of them, which have a budget of more than two big dollars, and they have a staff, new captain, headquarters, maybe a hundred and fifty-five, how it is, good people, engineers, doctors, attorneys, uh, so it's a gal, and by four policy, they were required to do just what you're talking about. Each month, they made reports. When I picked up, just create reports for the board, for the board to look at what we're, what we're doing, and then make recommendations about what direction, where we need to spend money. However, that, that staff of a hundred and fifty-five, we're injured here, but we have a small staff. And, in my district here, it, it always works pretty well, that if I needed specific information about, I won't say really, roll-off sites, or, or what else we're doing, I can go to the administrator or to the assistant administrator. If they give me, uh, uh, I don't know what, what happens after, what are the nuggets doing, and I believe that they, they run it, tough work, and we have a good long discussion. More of an informal thing, that's worked well for me. I just don't know that our staff is robust enough, that we could say every department needs to spend, how, how long do we think we need this, okay?
Well, what I recommend is, is every three months. If, I think by doing monthly would, would cost too much, it would be.
That'd be too much, yeah.
Too much strain on, on a person, and they need to do, I don't know, that takes for a month. If they wrote it down, full time a year, like you do in a quarter.
I've only got five departments, four months, you got library, you got a little compartment, you got dollar money.
Animal control.
And animal control.
Engineering.
Engineering.
Building planning, mosquito control, recycling.
Well, I would agree with you, with, with maybe, uh, I'm not sure, quartering, maybe every four months, or every six months. Have, have animal control, get on their business, and they tell us, this is what we're working on, here's what our plans are, you spend ten minutes. And then the next one up, you can let those departments do it, something along that nature, but that's normal.
Right, well, that would be considered, they need it officially in front of the board, that would be considered a part of the sheet. If it is, then right, so that, that makes it understandable, it makes it, that, you can't hire outside the office to go through the new one.
No, we can't do that, that's not what. And it gives the board opportunities, it really, I mean, and we're, we're, we're.
That's exactly what I mean.
But what, reaction, the, what we're doing on this?
If I can make a suggestion.
All right, suggestion.
What?
I'm a part of the group here, yeah.
And obviously, we've had, I've worked for several different county administrators. Um, some of them felt very strongly that the management of day-to-day operations is something that fell under their curtains. And, uh, but however, um, I know when, when I worked with staff, we would, um, present to the board every year, a department, um, presentation, and bring the board up to see every year, this is what, this is what our day-to-day, you know, this is what we manage, this is what our calls are, this is what our budgets are, these are our budgets are. Um, I, and I, we're here where we have monthly reporting. Um, whether you report the same information every month, or you track it for four months and record it then, I believe it takes the same amount of effort. If we are counting the number of rates that we pay, the number of cell phone calls that we answer, the number of, and, you know, citizen encounters, I, I just believe that's laborious for a staff. But I do, I don't disagree that if I was my annual report to the board, um, if the board would like to see our department come forward and make a presentation, I would not disagree with that.
I think it would be a wise.
I think it'd be a great idea, and, you know, a couple times a year, I don't need to get into the minutia about how many times, if any, problems, that, you know, that's, uh, that's a little detail that you need, uh, not necessarily, uh.
Four, six quarters.
Well, don't exaggerate, are you moving more in fact, or are you, I mean.
I'm gonna do it, I'm. Yeah, you did.
Are the people, are they, are people are not working, or?
There is, uh, there's a misstructure of them.
Thank you.
There is a misstructure in them, and in order to all the bridge that truck, if it's a road, if it's a, if it's a, you have to have some sort of reset key, some sort of transparency issue, or, I can't, a productivity sheet cut down and get it, and the person coming in, like you say, without agents coming in, and traditionally how it's done, you know, it's like, request and give the information. What happens is the person knocks the account for me, how is my account paying for acting in information, and has to go to a Florida replay.
They get on my office.
Right, that's, that's traditionally how it's done, but that's if you're a word, I'm not trying to say she's second saying that your word is wrong, and it's just you're worrying, that can be taken at the time. But if you have, you print out to somebody, you know, this is where the candles are being used, for past few, four, fifteen years. The issue at hand is that people don't trust. There are people don't trust. If you have a productivity sheet, we have something to show them, we have proof, we have evidence, and everything in the rest of the team. In what, productivity sheet, and then thirty-five hundred bucks, you send the roll-up to sure, and with your, your, you use something more, because I'm not kidding, that's. I just think it works, it's a real wide thing.
One thing that I have discussed first time, Commissioner Murphy, I've been here, and I've tried to discuss this time, is that we have a project list of every, every project, it's online, and it's posted, maybe eleven, or maybe, of every project. When it's going to be started, uh, when it comes to some time, uh, apartment, and, and intervals in between, and up, some update, and either we have it online, the people could go and look at that and say, oh, you're doing this, and this, and this, and this, and, and it, it lets people know what you're doing. Uh, because people would say, what do y'all do, you got three meetings a month, and what do y'all do? And so then, you know, you start explaining, you know, but if not, the three meetings a month, is that something more of that, with satisfiedness?
What, what my constituents are looking at is productivity, and, and they want to know what's happening.
Within organizations, you've got, I think, the majority of people that are really hardworking, and they give you eight hours for eight hours paid, and you've got those, that, uh, you know, like, you've got some that give you, nobody's probably gets a hundred, so, say you've got those few that will give you ninety, but you're probably the majority of the people are going to be somewhere around, probably seventy, then you don't have those that are much, um, lower than that in any organization. Um, unlike Commissioner Page, most of the things that I've requested, um, um, they've been done most of the time in a timeless fashion. I have had some complaints about my fault with these people, and they were, and a certain person, they shouldn't have been there, I mean, you're, I always find that.
We can't have that much enough, that citizens complain about this, and that already used for a pretty shitty, and I was like this. I think of this setting, if you go out and bring this, and you're in the middle of a side of a road, you gotta have traction, you know? You know, I, I, you know, that's why I was like.
Well, and I would say that, I mean, you have, I think, different lists that may, um, meet the criteria that you're, that, um, Commissioner Murphy is discussing. We have a master project list, we have our work order system, we have, you know, kind of like emails that we keep up with, making requests to staff. Each department has a website where they list, um, what their, um, you know, duties and responsibilities are, and we're still working on a related road list. So I, I, I believe that we are accountable as far as the work that we do.
You know, the work order system we got, I'll bet that you can run a program, just shows all the work orders that our road department has done, and our special projects person, without them buying, we get it to them, and then it'll be a.
It would be voluminous.
Yeah, it'll be voluminous right there, that's what we've been doing, if you've got the date on, that might be easier to, just thought. Anyway, break them up. Like, let's see, it's probably about, what, what.
Would you be satisfied with, like we've done in the past, um, a, um, a workshop where we provide an essay to the board for every department?
Great idea, we did that, we do it each, we all work out, each person without ten minutes. Real workshop. Absolutely, absolutely. Something, something that our, that knows, hey, we're all on our own.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up here.
Thank you.
And of course, let me add that, each commissioner certainly is welcome to ask any questions anytime, and I tend to be, for doors, whatever you need, I will be happy to do.
No, not yet, I don't think it's very close.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm sure I didn't even like you, reason actually, but I have a number eight, you want to pass the pricing level of five, five. So, the package that I have given you, um, provides certain information. Um, back in twenty thirteen, um, Dad Brown brought to the board a request to, um, make changes to the purchasing threshold. Um, I have researched the best I can, and attempted to reproduce what he brought to the board. So I brought, um, there's the agenda cover sheet, the PowerPoint slides that he used, and I think it was discussed in a workshop, and then the minute from March fourth, two thousand and working, where the board approved the reflection changes to the purchase policy. Unfortunately, it would appear that none of these changes were ever captured in our policy. So, um, in, in, an attempt to clarify exactly what a policy is, I have captured the changes in a pol- in a policy, a draft policy, and also, um, provided you with the current or the old policy.
Now, the new policy, that, the, the, just presented two of them, this, uh, on the slide next.
Yes, which is.
Which is?
For purchases of single items less than two thousand five hundred dollars, best purchasing practices to be used, that is straight out of the Florida administrative code.
Okay.
Um, purchase orders with a per unit cost between two thousand five hundred and one dollars and thirty-five thousand dollars will be authorized by the department head and the county administrator. Regritten quotes are required, or we must document those quotes.
That's in the, uh, F A C rule sixty-eight dash one.
Yes.
Now, do we go by that, or do we go by the state of county, sure, it's all.
Well, we've been, uh, we've been, yes, sir, I, I would say so. We, we've largely been sticking to the, to the old policy, because that's what we're.
We've, we've largely been sticking to the, to the old policy because that's what we're, um, that's what we have in writing, although I do think there have been some purchases that have utilized what was approved back in twenty thirteen.
Well, that is, is, is going to be your, your decision, if we approve this new policy that you created with these numbers in, or will it change even now?
Not, my, I would like to capture what the board approved back in two thousand and fourteen.
Which is this? That's the second document, right?
That is, yes.
Twenty-five hundred and one dollars, thirty-five thousand.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so this policy will be dated, dated to year four fifteen.
I'll fix that, I'm sorry, that's, that would be whatever the date of the board meeting.
And you're comfortable with that? No, I'm.
You don't think it's more, you might want to move it up a little bit?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get that down. I'm comfortable with what's captured in policy. Um, I, if we've been using a threshold, a certain, and that is what state statute and is in the greater code, if that's what the state government uses, um, and we obtain re-written quotes, or we, we actually purchase off, we take it back, or we purchase off, um, the state, um, like the sheriff's association, uh, or B M S or something like that, I think that, I mean, that's basically, um, following state statute, but.
I don't have any problem with.
So, we just, just, just clarify, a, a department has to go out and spend up to thirty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
With, um, they have to get quotes, and they have to be approved by.
Yes. Any, any purchases over fifteen thousand dollars have to be approved by the county administrator. But yes, it would require.
Over fifteen, and what's that, what's that, I don't see that.
Yes, where, this is a policy.
This is single item purchases, so, yes. So, for instance, if it was a vehicle purchase, because these are single line item purchases, so it would have to be a large purchase, something like a vehicle, it would be the main, the main item that we would purchase. We would be able to either purchase off state contracts, or to, to obtain three quotes. And then, the, the purchasing agent that the, the county adminis- the department had approved it, and the county administrator approved it. Now, again, we follow our C I P, our approved C I Ps as well.
So, the department can spend up fifteen hundred dollars?
Twenty-five, twenty-five hundred.
With a thirty minute cost, twenty-five hundred and fifteen hundred issues going off to the department.
That's the old policy.
Well, I know that the note in here has not been changed, what we talked about this afternoon, is that.
It's a good policy.
You're gonna get a quote, so, like, and you get three quotes, that's it. The quote specification should be in writing, so that everybody who looks on something has to, has to sign and, and, I, so you can pick up the phone, and call one place to get a quote, and it is one day, and you talk to the next one, and the spec is not signed, if you just told this one, and so you get a little bit, it needs to be in writing, whatever quote specification you use, needs to be printed, and whoever's gonna get the quote. Yeah, and, I, I would suggest that we have time to look, look at this, and, um, study it, and then come back, but I agree with anybody on, on whatever, yes, but, um, I just feel like we need to move, we need to capture this in policy, because there's no question, I, I think we spend too much time trying to determine what our policy is. And I agree, I think it needs to be cleaned up and done, but, um, you know, yeah.
Y'all talking about something in writing, three quotes, less than five hundred dollars.
Talking about the spec, well, whatever you're getting the quote, right, say, if you get like, three written quotes on one item. If you don't have written specifications for what you're asking for, you may have this of one person and this of somebody else, and, you know, you and I, talk about this, thirty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money, it's paying taxpayer's money, without the board's approval, in my book. Um, and you got people who will go buy a car with state contract, this is what we call that, and get a low price, and they go out there and they add all kinds of stuff to that vehicle, which is a hard that time vehicle. And they get that to circumvent a lot of times, and.
Pretty difficult.
State's where it is.
All right, uh, is there a minimum the department heads can do about, without having three quotes?
Twenty-five hundred dollars. And the way it is, the language that's used in Florida administrative code is, the language came straight out of the code, best purchasing practices.
All right, well, I'm confused now. You want all these quotes to be in writing, and with specs?
From twenty-five hundred.
That's twenty-five hundred and one dollars on up.
Whatever you get quotes on, and it, and it, according to the policy, the three quotes will comply, will be, uh, be just twenty thousand dollars or more.
Okay, all right, I see.
Okay, so, what my thing is, that when you're gonna get quotes on something, you need to have written specifications for it, yeah, especially if you know it's thirty-five thousand dollars.
Do you think the board would be liable to reduce the thirty-five thousand to a lower?
I would agree with thirty-five thousand.
Would you agree with twenty-five?
That's a lot of food, that's a lot of money.
Well, we don't spend all of our time here, uh, on business, twenty-six hundred dollar items.
But that's the best way to, uh, to let students know, if you're concerned about what people can, I guess.
Now, what, what?
I talked real long about.
What, this is a fair example, it's on the state business, and all that, we don't normally do, we should go back.
Right, if not, that's, that contract.
But the department has to be voted into that, and in order to be voted into something like that, their capital, if you recall, as part of this last year, and I think it's two years in a row, since I've been back, we asked the board to approve our capital expenditures. So, the board approves our capital expenditures one time, the money's missing to the budget, and now we're just trying to be able to spend it without starting all over again and going through a bid process, if, if this policy's already in place.
I'll, I'll do, just more attention, what is purchased?
I would, I'll say whatever, I mean, I, I'm not here to argue this point, I'm just trying to capture in policy, what has been a policy since two thousand and fourteen.
We need to somehow make sure that we are getting the best value, or whatever, I mean, and I know some people like me, I would even go buy a hundred and twenty-five dollar weed themselves, during the process, and it's the same weed you do with three different places, just from, because I'm spending my money, and, so I wanna make sure that I'm getting the best price, you know, um, if I can get gas for two ten versus two thirty-nine, I mean, you know, it's just like shopping and making sure that we're, well, that's the definition, to have best purchasing policy.
And, um, our staff, as far as I know, uh, you know, I can't be every growth one time, but my staff reassures me that they always try to get the best value, um, and we stop locally as much as we can, um, and a lot of the purchases we make are repetitive purchases. So, we know, you know, that this, this store or this supplier has it at this price, and this supplier over here is a little bit higher, so I think it just becomes a matter of practice for us.
That's almost list, twenty-five hundred and all of that.
Yes.
Look on the, practice.
But I'm, I'm just asking the board to review, um, the policy, and when we're ready to put it on the agenda, I would like to move forward, so we have some clear definition of what our policy is, and, and how to follow it.
Well, I think each commissioner can look at this, and, and jot down your own, your own thoughts.
Yeah.
And then come back together again, maybe at the next workshop, and, um, and, and turn all our ideas on the table, and then come to a consensus of what we wanna do, and then put on the next, uh, board meeting where we can vote on it, is that faster than?
Oh, absolutely, I'm just attempting to make people a progress. I don't like ambiguity in our policy.
Right, right.
And I'm pretty likely looking into this, um, that, that's true. Uh, that's the last thing on our agenda tonight, but I want to ask one question, if the board takes a, speaks about it, and that was, um, to discuss our workshop date, um, not sure if you wanna speak to that.
Of course.
You wanna, okay, now, what, you wanna speak? Well, what I, we talked about earlier is, when we have a, a regular meeting, it's our first time meeting of the month, and then two or nine later, we got a workshop. So, you can give me a thirty dollars tonight, and if I come, to get together what you've done in a regular meeting, and then you, and your others, maybe by after that, at the workshop. I haven't talked to a lot about it, if it's convenient for them to do that, but it looks like it's maybe you can come the other day, when we don't have another regular meeting in the same week. So, it's, you know, something the board and I talked to, when we take a, uh, and talked earlier, is, like, trying to, so we can have two long meetings in one week. Well, I think understood why we have a meeting on Monday, and a meeting on Tuesday, and a meeting on Thursday. Why is it wrong when all our meetings be on Tuesday, or Monday, or a Thursday? It's, it's, well, we got all these mornings, so. They used to be Thursday and Monday, was on Tuesday, they were fixed to be. Yeah. I, I knew it when they got changed to Monday, Thursday, Monday. Why, that one I think along, was, yeah, what we used to.
Then, what, 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 what?
Um, I didn't make it, for everyone, to have two long meetings in one week.
Yeah, right, well, like, like, January the seventh, which is our last regular meeting, and then here we are, meeting on Wednesday, every day later. Three, nine, eleven, if you had this, this meeting tonight, next week, then you'd have one meeting a week for thirty weeks, then the fourth week, you wouldn't have to be ready for the next month. That's down the line, we, we, we prove it. You'd have second, wait for the month of the fourth week. Right?
Well, one of the, comes, more convenient for me to accomplish, I had it on the last Tuesday of the month, that will give you, um, if there's something that's on the, the workshop that needs to be approved, and you can get it on the data to get it.
About the first meeting of the next one.
Right. I just want to caution that we did make some changes from the original, um, schedule that came out because of certain things, like we've got the fact, um, like, let's say, and then we got, you know, Valentine's Day, and we didn't wanna have a meeting on Valentine's night, and, uh, do a lot of sports, something, we have to take into consideration some key things, but other than that, I mean, I, I might look at this, but, you know.
Didn't we change the workshops at one time because of a conflict with Big Ben water authority meeting?
Uh, I don't think that.
And also, you have to check with Conrad, because.
That's right.
He goes to horseshoe, um, some, some, uh, night, so, you know, you have to check with his schedule too, and I forget, maybe it's Thursday, so he goes to horseshoe, I'm not sure.
Also, I think it's on, third Monday, I think from the last, it would be, it would be every month, be about a year, I go to the, I go to the, uh, all the, uh, planning out for the fourth Thursday, and then.
On Thursday, okay, and Conrad's got stuff on Thursday, and you've got stuff on Monday, then maybe Tuesday would be, the best, but we have to verify that.
All right, let's verify that, too, that's, uh. Oh, maybe on Monday too.
It's, it really doesn't make sense to have two, we need to separate this, and have one meeting, and now we have a workshop, and, 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 like, our staff gotta be up early in the morning, gotta be here in the morning, so I think what we need to do is probably go check all our calendars, then turn our calendars through the county administration, so that way they can see what happens, just, because it's gonna be difficult to try to line up five, six, seven, eight, try to line up all these things.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a difficult process.
Very difficult.
Yeah, very difficult process, because what seems to me may not be true, if I personally, so, and it is, uh, I think it does need to change, because that's, that's a little too much, it's not sure you're waiting for me, sure you're waiting for our staff, that's the way I look at it, and here it is, all, uh, this five hour line, you have a meeting at what time in the morning?
Eight o'clock. Well, I, I, I have my children at school too. So, can I ask a question, uh, would you be interested in a daytime workshop, or, or do you want evening meetings?
Oh, well, it's more time stuff than they have to do.
It didn't matter to me.
Well, why, why do you have, starting back in line?
Huh?
Have you started back in line? Well, I have to be at the school though, too.
Get fixed to it, I'm late, I don't like to be before nine o'clock.
Okay, well then, Tuesday evening, do, can you think of any of your committees or boards that meet on Tuesday night?
I don't have any that do.
Don't think so, I think, yeah, I, yeah, yeah.
So, typically, the last, um, the last week of the month is a little quieter for, for us, um, and, I mean, that, that might be, that'll work for us.
Yeah, that's, fourth week, you don't take it, right?
Fourth, the fourth Tuesday of the month.
That's why we need to do it, it works pretty good.
It would take, it would take them out, and I think I'd rather have one meeting a month, or a week, than to, to try to have.
Two in one week.
Yeah, nine meetings a month.
Okay, look, give us something, email that. We've got to put everything for the season, um, anybody else have anything cooking?
Yes. My wife called me about eleven o'clock to bring shovel into the rest, and whatever at Port Capital Hall isn't getting delivered, this Master Burner and bill any thought, so supposedly that, that's delivered today.
That, that pays for it.
That pays for it, right, and our, uh, people went out there and got somebody to grab two subs there, and I don't think that's, that's a sharp, that's easy.
Good, that's the way.
They were all, they, they were in that, and, and, uh, well, that's one truck that got by, and also while I was out there, him, with that road that goes behind Port Capital, one time it through. Right. It, all this rain, and all this full of potholes, we all looked, looked a couple of miller in there, before we had another festival or something.
Yeah, you're breaking maybe.
And, uh, a little bit of that from the Port Capital, a little bit, I don't know if any of these things are, but, and, uh, but, you had the miller, and, and our road cut some of them all right about the, the, the stage, you know, it's kind of.
Let me tell y'all something, I've got down our, um, board retreat, if one of the islands on there, is to look at the road paving, the Port Capital Hall, and all some lines, so let's discuss that in detail next Thursday.
There's something else that needs people covering up too, that's been brought on my mind, we need to fix up some kind of temporary barrier that we use on that back door, where you can, you, they won't, you won't have access to the office area, but you'll have access to the bathroom, on festival days.
Yeah.
We need to be able to come, people need to, need to be able to come in on that west door, and go in the hall and use the handicap bathrooms, I've had a lot of people complaining about. The, the door over there on that side, and they. Yeah, but you have, you just put a temporary barrier there in the hall.
Yeah.
Where you can get enough water in the bathroom, you know, and then you'd have to put a little tailgate, and, and I thought the, you know, several people might want me to cut, if we could do that for events where on the outside, where people could use our house bathrooms that we have right now, you know, you got a lot of people that, that, handicap people that need that, need that, and, you know, it's all, it's all, it's all running a quarter yard for a handicap car, to have a handicap quarter yard, and another thing that's on my thinking during country festival parade, everybody set up that morning all the way down Jefferson Street, there needs to be a quarter yard plotted along Jefferson Street for that morning.
For a, no?
Because people, I mean. Because people, I mean, it was, they, they were for two or three hours, wasn't, you know, the sharp parade, and if you're real simple, put someone, like, when they bought their sitting rooms off, if they had them out there, along, it really rubbed down Erickson Street.
They, they need to talk to the city about that?
Yeah.
Without city counseling, I'm sure.
Exactly, yeah.
That's a contract for you.
It would be, but, it ain't even a bunch of people mentioning that that morning, everybody was setting up, they'll take the lead, and they was looking at watching, and running down there to that, um, Wander Net, and running back that road, you know, everybody wanted to wear a quarter john, a lot of it was a car one. If that meant Mike and Art's, uh, uh, Wander Net down there, people been in trouble.
You got that one, Catherine?
I'm thinking of that, it's in my, my brain right now.
Thank you, anything else, if not the song?
The song, aye.